We are all set on record. And I'm ready when you are.
Great. All right, then this is the call to order of the planning board meeting for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, for the city of Boulder. And I'm Harmon Zuckerman, the chair, and I'm going to turn it right over to Brenda Rittenhour. She is going to manage our meeting tonight on Zoom. And take it away, Brenda.
Hello, and welcome everyone to the planning board meeting this evening. I'm with our communication and engagement department, and it's always my pleasure when I have the opportunity to support the good and hard work that happens at board and commission meetings here at the city. So thank you to all the board members for all the time that you give us and expertise. So we are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly. And as such, we have some specific protocol for our virtual meetings. Any activity that disrupts delays or delays or interferes with the meeting are prohibited. Just as it would be if we were meeting in person, the time for speaking or asking questions is limited. So either I or the board chair will recognize applicants or members of the public to speak and unmute you when those times come on the agenda. We need anyone attending to address the board using your full name. If your full name is not currently displayed, we need to ask you to change it, which I can tell you how to do and or send it to me in the chat and I can change it for you. If you click on the top right corner of your picture in the or sorry, if you click on your name in the participant box, then you should be able to change your name. You'll see a button that says more that offers you several options. Again, I'm also happy to change your name for you. You can send it to me in the Q and A box or the chat. No video will be permitted except for board, staff and applicants. All others will participate by voice only. This again helps keep our meeting safe from disruption. Harmon and I or Cindy, if she is acting as host for a moment, will enforce these rules by muting anyone who violates the rules. So we please ask for your cooperation. The chat function should only be used for technical issues to communicate with me or with Cindy Spence in our roles as technical hosts. And only staff and board members will be allowed to share their screens. Thank you so much. We appreciate your cooperation with these rules. Back to you, Harmon.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let's pull up my agenda again. Okay, so the next order of business is for us to allow for public participation. And this is for members of the public, each of whom may have three minutes to address the board to speak to us about items that they are interested in and want to bring to the board's attention. The only items we won't be hearing about are our public hearing item tonight, which if you want to speak to the public hearing item, please speak to the public hearing item after that item has been presented during public comment for that particular item. And that item is the land use map, the planning areas map, policy and text changes for the 2020 midterm update of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. But we have matters tonight that members of the public are welcome to speak to. And I'm going to turn it back over to Brenda. And Brenda, if you can run this public participation item in our agenda, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we would love for you to indicate that you would like to speak by using the raise hand button that you will find at the bottom of your screen. It's a blue hand. And as you press that hand, you will come up on my list in the order that you did so. And that's how I'll call you. I'll try to give a little heads up of a few names so that you know your turn is coming. And then as far as timing goes, and I'm sorry, Harmon, do you typically do two minutes or three?
We do three minutes per speaker.
Great. So I will show hand signals so that we don't have to block out the screen with a timer. So I'll give two minutes at two minutes. I'll give one minute at one minute. And I will give you a stop when your time is up. And then we ask that you finish your sentence, please. And so I just want to make sure I have my notes in front of me so I'm not missing a thing. I'm seeing plenty of hands up, so it looks like we're all ready to get started. Thank you. We will start with Kurt Norback, followed by David Takahashi, followed by Tom Volkhausen. So Kurt, you should be able to unmute now.
Hi, board. Thanks. This is Kurt Norback, speaking on behalf of Community Cycles tonight. Hopefully you got the letter from Community Cycles about the design and construction standards. We're very pleased to be moving forward with the update of chapter two of the Design and Construction Standards. This is great. It's something we've been pushing for for a long time. And we're pleased that the city will be starting with section 2.07, which is the streets, design standards for non-residential streets. We had hoped that we would also be able to look at the section 2.08, which was the sidewalk standards. But it sounds like the Pedestrian Advisory Committee is going to be looking at those this year. And so we're going to, the city is planning to put those off for a year. But we're very much looking forward to seeing those coming back in 2022. Very many of the comments that we've submitted to you over the years have related to sidewalks, improper sidewalk design, inadequate sidewalks and so on. And so we're really looking forward to that. We do feel that some of the additional items that the city wants to wrap into this update, like median standards and pavement replacement standards and so on, they're certainly important, but they don't seem like as high a priority as real safety-related issues. And that's why we're requesting that instead of putting in that sort of grab bag of other items that we wrap in 2.06, which is the base street standards, and then also 2.09, which is the residential street standards. And look at it. So 2.06, 2.07, and 2.09, they all relate to streets. We're suggesting that we look at them all together because they really all should go together. In some ways, maybe they should even be in the same subsection of chapter two. So that was the content of the letter that we sent you, and thank you for your thoughts on this.
And thank you, Kurt. Next, I'm coming to David Takahashi, followed by Tom Volkhausen. David, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you for taking public comment on the lack of affordable and workhouse housing. My story has to do with my experiences with the land use department and how improvements might be made consistent with the Boulder Climate Action Plan. I must admit that affordability had a lot to do with our purchase in 2012 of a modest 1,000 square foot suburban ranch in Martin Acres. My wife is a piano instructor and we wish to convert our garage into a piano studio, thinking it would allow neighborhood children to be able to walk or ride to their lessons. But the city of Boulder said no, unless we could provide two off-street parking spots. I pled the irony of having climate action concerns while encouraging automobile domination. I argued about the merits of increasing walkability. You know how far that got. In 2015, we committed to take our 1954 ranch, hers rating 190 toward net zero. By 2018, we had achieved a hers rating of minus 50. It was not as easy as you might think. In 2017, I turned my attention to building a passive house ADU in our backyard to prove that a detached unit could be made that might be heated with a hair dryer. Again, an additional parking space put a halt to a project that would have provided additional workforce housing for our neighborhood with a minuscule carbon footprint. The final land use obstacle is charging an electric car from solar panels on our property, not the dirty grid. We used up our available roof, but a carport in the sunny front setback with solar would enable us to do this. I have not approached the city about this, but the answer will surely be no. My concern is that if we agree that COVID-19 is a dress rehearsal for the main climate disruption events unleashed by our continuing to pour greenhouse gas waste into our atmosphere, why are we not providing incentives to do the kinds of things I have outlined here? Instead of bringing out the carrots, the city of Boulder is bringing out the sticks. We must find ways to incentivize the beneficial projects and penalize the ones that take us in the wrong direction on climate. We need to come to grips with the fact that the single-use zoning that worked in the past is no longer serving us well. For me, the three most affordable housing priorities are supply, supply, and supply. I implore the planning board to find ways to enable great things to happen with housing and the environment in Boulder. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Tom Volkhausen, followed by David Adamson, followed by Donna George. Tom, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Tom Volkhausen, 2636 Fifth Street, Boulder, Colorado. And I'm speaking tonight to call your attention to the letter from the Indian Peaks Group of the Sierra Club, which I hope you all received. I see so much shaking their heads, so I'll double check. Anyway, the national, the state, and the local Sierra Club have strong policies in favor of compact urban development and in opposition to sprawl. Also, our policies support low-carbon land use. The reason I'm speaking tonight is to ask you to have a work plan for 2021 that addresses the serious housing crisis in Boulder today. Anyone walking down the street can see the increased numbers of homeless people. People that are not allowed to live in the city of Boulder live somewhere. And people that don't live in cities by definition emit more carbon because they cannot have shared walls and ceilings because they have more transportation emissions and they create more habitat impact because they sprawl out. I have seen people complaining about uncontrolled growth in Boulder. But the fact based on the census is that Boulder has no growth at all. Boulder population has shrunk over the last three years. We are clearly not adding affordable workforce housing in Boulder. We are losing it, and this is a crisis. You can walk down any street in Table Mesa or Martin Acres and see what historically were rental properties being converted into owner-occupied and low occupancy units. So we have a list of six suggestions for the planning board to address the housing crisis in Boulder. And most importantly is simply to allow the construction of additional affordable workforce housing. And that means moving away from the exclusive single-family zoning, which currently covers over 80% of residential zone land in Boulder. Parking minimums are being removed in over 100 cities in the U.S. Boulder currently has excessive minimum parking requirements that are based on suburban concepts from decades ago. And this presents a large impediment to providing affordable housing. If you go to Denver, it's easy to see fourplexes and eightplexes that are on the same footprint as individual, single-family homes in Boulder. But they do not have more than one unit of parking, more than one parking space per unit. And of course, it would be physically impossible on both Boulder lots to add more housing units and to comply with the minimum parking requirements. And minimum parking requirements also make the 15-minute neighborhood very impractical. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next on the list, we now have Donna George. I think someone else who was on there may have fallen off. So Donna, I hope you're feeling ready. And then I do have someone whose name is currently listed as Catalyst BC. And I do need to have your full name listed before we can unmute you. So I see that you want to participate and ask that you change your name or please send it to me in the text. I also wanted to share with you if someone who's joined us by phone. And if you'd like to participate in public comment at this time and you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. So now we'll go to Donna George, followed by Lisa Spalding. Donna, you should be able to unmute now.
Okay, I think I unmuted.
Yep, you did.
Hi, I'm Donna George. I live at 4661 Tally Ho Court. And what I'd like to address here tonight in the public comment is the noticing of meetings. I just, this is a very important meeting. It's the comp plan. It's making changes, land use changes. It's also making policy changes. And you, I, the only message I got from this was I got an email on Tuesday night around four something concerning this meeting. I had to myself put on next door for the community to learn about it. I noticed that the Left Hand Valley Curia, which is our kind of local online paper here now, they had a public hearing announcement about a open space acquisition that was coming up, but they had no announcement about this important meeting. And it's also during a very busy time for citizens. It's between Thanksgiving and the holiday season. People are preoccupied. COVID-19 has spiked up again. Some people are dealing with that, either with loved ones have it or they themselves have it. And I don't understand what the rush is for getting any of this stuff done by the end of the year. I think the staff and the elected officials are kind of putting that on themselves. This can wait until the new year when people are not busy with the holidays, when it has been noticed appropriately and that people know what's going on. When I was involved in the 2015 Boulder Valley Comp Plan update, one of the important things they said is they wanted you involved because they wanted you to have a say in what happens in your community, on how your community develops and grows. But what I'm seeing here is mainly something that's presented by staff and elected officials and very limited input from the community. I would like to know how many emails have you gotten from the community concerning this update? I suspect very few. The other thing is, is if you look at some of the things, like the Odell thing was initiated, it wasn't initiated by citizens, it was initiated by staff. All the policy changes, they were initiated by the city, not by citizens, by the city. So if we're really going to have a democracy where people are informed correctly, are engaged, and know what's going on, you can't be sliding this stuff through in the middle of a very busy time at the end of the year. So I would like to see much better announcement of meetings, a much better outreach to the public. And you know, we do this like Be Heard. It's on the computer. There are many elderly people that don't have any about that. What about signs, you know, around town? Or some other way where you have representatives or explaining to people that this can affect what's happening in their community? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next, we have Linda Spalding, followed by Michael Williamson, followed by Mason Cowles. So my Linda, excuse me, Lisa Spalding, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Brenda. Lisa Spalding, I am a member of the Plan Boulder County Board, and I'm speaking on behalf of our co-chairs, Peter Mayer and Alan Feinberg. As a group that follows planning issues closely, Plan Boulder County appreciates the first draft of your reply to City Council's request for the board's input into the annual work plan process. We commend David Ensign and Sarah Silver for their ability to capture the complexity of the issues you're dealing with within the framework of equity and innovation. We have followed the extensive work you've done to update the land use table and to guide the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan and look forward to the successful conclusion of both projects. We appreciate your emphasis on meaningful community engagement, which should result in more cooperative and creative collaboration on small and large-scale community planning projects. Your nuanced understanding of our community's need for diverse housing opportunities that are affordable for low income and moderate income, as well as the missing middle, are exemplary. The affordable housing conversation has progressed beyond simplistic calls for density that are neither tailored to meet the housing needs of the people we wish to attract and protect, nor fine-tuned to ensure affordability. We also appreciate your concern for the morale of the planning department staff who have had a particularly difficult year, but have risen to the occasion. Thank you for your service and for this thoughtful response to City Council's request.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Williamson, followed by Mason Cowles, followed by Lynn Segal. And I want to ensure David Adamson that I see your hand back up on the list, and we will come to you.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me now? Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm a small business owner in Boulder City. And Jeff Guard, our attorney, had sent you guys some documentation earlier this week in regards to changing the land use code 9-10-2A to extend non-conforming use protection to the city's licensed cannabis businesses. We took over the, what was the previous greenest green space? It was a dormant 18,000 square foot building for seven months. It was not allowed to be used for cannabis production. We used it for hemp seed production. And due to COVID and other economic issues, the hemp season was very lackluster. We're about $1.2 million invested into the project. And I had talked to zoning early on, who pushed me to the CLAB committee. I've spent 18 hours to speak for six minutes to CLAB to not really get any traction. And kind of where we added, where we're at is we had six employees in the project. We're down to two. If we can't make a change here, I'm going to have to let everyone go and bankrupt the company, unfortunately. The use on the building really can't be anything other than cannabis because it's so built out. I looked into a leafy green farm, vertical farm, but the ROI is eight years. And so it was a previous cannabis facility for nine years. And so we are looking to change some of the language, as you did in Boulder County. My understanding was, the concern was that there would be a green mile of dispensaries. Well, this is a back of a warehouse that is on the railroad tracks. And we would employ 18 people if allowed to pivot. We would deploy another $1.5 million into the project. I have several local Boulder residents who are now going to be laid off and are having hard financial times. Through COVID, we didn't adjust their pay at all. We paid them full-time. And we probably should have closed our doors about six months ago. I've made no traction whatsoever, and it's really a frustrating situation. And I don't think that I'm going to get any resolution here tonight, but I do appreciate you guys listening. I highly encourage you to take a look at the documents that Jeff Guard provided and highly, highly consider addressing this issue with all the small businesses going under. Here's an opportunity to keep one around and employ more people and generate $360,000 worth of tax revenue per year, not including the offset of the energy for the tax credits. Again, it's, you know, it's really a cry of desperation. My family and I will probably be leaving Boulder, along with many other families in the area that are attached to this business. And it's, it comes with great sorrow because we've loved raising our children in Boulder, and now we're kind of forced out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Mason Cowles, followed by Lynn Segal, followed by David Adamson. For those who may have joined us late, I just wanted to say a reminder that this is the public comment for the general meeting. This is not yet the public hearing for the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So Mason, I'm coming to you, and you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to urge you to call out the importance of workforce and affordable housing in your letter to council. At the November 19th Planning Board, members made compelling statements about the importance of housing. Lisa noted that we are failing to address the middle to incentivize smaller homes. The current approach to housing is not working, she said. She has so many friends who have moved out of Boulder, and they're not even trying to come back. What about the artists, the city employees, the snowplow drivers who would have to sleep on someone's couch before driving a snowplow? We are not doing enough for the missing middle, she said. Why are we not permitting duplexes and smaller homes? There are too many large deluxe homes. David, you said, how can we open up housing? Inclusionary zoning is good, but there are other things we can do to help affordability. You were concerned that City Council has not consented to review occupancy limits. John, your comment was that low-income affordable housing is good, but we also want to think of middle-income market rate housing and have those options available too. We should put effort in that direction. Lupita, you said we're only accommodating rich people. Every time there's an affordable housing project, there's a line of people testifying against it. They favor it, just not here. So we have a difficult time making difficult decisions. Peter, you channeled the housing board, asking this very important question. Where in the world would our open space program be if Boulder's open space leadership were as poor as it is in the area of housing? And Harmon, you said we should make places for employees, for snowplow drivers, who don't have to sleep on someone's couch before a snowstorm. Your letter to council is a part of a packet for the retreat. They will receive a 200-page briefing book on every program in the city's 15 departments and a report on 40 different items on the work plan. So if you want to be heard in the city priority for housing, you must say it clearly. Planning Board thinks there's a housing crisis, and here is the low-hanging fruit. Number one, implement phase two of Boulder Junction, whose zoning can accommodate 1,000 new workforce and affordable units. Number two, complete the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan and declare that dense workforce housing along this transportation corridor will be an important community benefit. Three, perform the baseline study in the planning reserve, one small part of which could provide enough housing to reach the goals of the 2017 Middle Income Housing Strategy. Four, implement further reforms of our ADU ordinance, which is still the most restrictive in the country. Five, address occupancy limits outside of the hill. Six, propose minimum densities along transportation corridors. Esteemed colleagues, the draft letter to council in your packet is vague, at least to me. From my experience, eight years on council and eight retreats, if you do not provide targeted, discreet ideas with measurable outcomes, your concerns about equity and innovation will be lost in a fog and lost in the 50 pages of other letters that council has from its other 18 boards and commissions. You have the competence and knowledge to get.
That's your time.
Please begin by calling this to council's attention forcefully. Thanks so much.
Next, I'm coming to Lynn Segal, followed by David Adamson, followed by Laura Scheinbaum. Lynn, you should be able to unmute.
This is utterly ridiculous that we are invisible to you. There are now people I know on planning board or through various modes that I will never, that will never see me on the street and know who I am, and they've spoken to me. That is absolutely not okay, and it's your fault as much as City Council's fault because you need to tell them that you need to see your public. Now, I have something to tell you about the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I think maybe you ought to make a recommendation to the Boulder County Commissioners or to the county treasurers. Because two of my best comps were just disqualified. And you know why? Because they were demolition after sale. One was right next door to me. And I'm told by the appraiser, David Martinez at the county, that this is because the cost of a demolition, which as we know is not a demolition anymore, right? It's a deconstruction, so it's quite costly. That cost goes into the property value, the land, the land. And you know what my land value is now? Probably five. And you know what my land value is now? Probably five percent, ninety-five percent is probably my land and five percent is my, my structure. Years ago, when I moved here in ninety-two, it was probably sixty percent structure, forty percent land, something like that. You're never going to put up a tent city here like in Eugene, never. Because this land's too friggin valuable. And it's valuable for things like having my two best comps taken out, my next door neighbors. Because it's a demolition after sale. How fascinating. Now, the Oz. At Twenty-Ninth Street. Macy's put in their appeal the very day the Oz was going into effect. We all know this. You better start listening to the people that you're representing. The people that were on this call tonight, I don't agree about the density people with Adamson and with Volkhausen. Because there's an endless demand in Boulder. What you need to do is cut the damages first. And one of those damages is demolition after sale. There's demolitions everywhere and there's one house after another torn down because they don't like the color of it. And it goes right back into the property value. And you wonder why there's homeless people around here? Figure it out. Done.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, we have David Adamson, followed by Laura Scheinbaum. At this time, I see no hands after Laura's. A reminder to our community member on the phone, if you'd like to participate, please press star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll take this as a last call for raised hands for open comment. David, I'm coming to you. You should be able to unmute now. I'm not hearing you, David.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
The button was in there. Brenda, so great to see you engaging as ever. When I send an email, does the board, does the board get it? Can they see an email that we sent them earlier? Okay, cool. I'm just going to refer to a couple of things. That I had building on what I had said before and on the beautiful comments of my neighbors. Great to hear from my neighbor Lynn, as always. And I want to build on what David and Tom and Macon have said. My main point, and I think you're going to promote the idea of the pilot, this housing pilot that we've been working on for several years. And a big part of it is already in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. But the point of that is to combine three elements. And allow people who want to do that of combining, putting the land into a community land trust or to the city's hands. Doing car sharing and having permanent affordability, they would have a lot of flexibility then to make their, their project work financially. That's the kind of housing that we want and it achieves high community benefit goals. So there is a way through this Gordian knot and that, this is one of them where almost all the units that we add are, are appreciation moderated. So I just want to. Note that a lot of people are worried that, oh, there's just no way through this, but that, that is really part of the way. So I want to emphasize that and hope you'll speak more clearly as Macon suggested about that idea of doing some, some pilots. And, and we've given you a support for that. Number two, before I forget, I just want to thank the board so much. You guys are tremendous. It's very complicated what you do. You have a diversity of opinions. I really value everything that all of you say. The last meeting was so amazing to hear you, Lupita especially. I want to, and Lisa, I just, anyway, all of you are great. Then I also want to, as I'm talking about this idea of changing the frame and changing the model, I want to suggest that we, you know, really do that over at Alpine Balsam as well. Let's not do the same barbell method of rich and poor. Instead, let's go for the bell curve. So there at Alpine Balsam, you would have ten percent, you know, rental affordable housing, say eighty-five percent of it could be middle income for sale housing. More than we said we would have, you know, make it work. And number three, and third, five percent really high income housing that could pay for the low income housing. And it's all car share, mostly car share there. So that's how that model could be applied there. And we don't make the developers pay very much for the land. Maybe then they can donate it back. The point is you do revenue participation with the city. It's a low barrier to entry for smart developers like that Peter Vitale knows. So the city is doing financial analysis right now. Let's talk about it now. Let's, let's go into that now and just, and see how we can apply a new model to Alpine Balsam. Thank you very much, board. You're beautiful. Have a good evening.
Thank you, David. Laura has moved herself to the public hearing later. So next we have Alex Hyde Wright, followed by Carol Dressley, followed by Alexa Parks. So I will unmute you now. Alex, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. This is Alex Hyde Wright, A fifteen Dewey Avenue, number three in Boulder. I just want to encourage planning board in the city to go big and bold on housing. I think that's what's needed. A couple of ideas I'd like to see pursued is to make building ADUs as easy and simple as possible in the city. Get rid of as many requirements as possible, get rid of the setback requirements, the parking requirements, the fees as much as possible. ADUs are some of the lowest impact options for improving and increasing density in neighborhoods. From what I've seen, residents who are surveyed about ADUs in their neighborhood, for the most part, don't even know they exist. That's how imperceptible they are. But all the benefits of affordable housing and density come with them. So I really like to see the city do as much as possible to facilitate the creation of ADUs throughout the city. Secondly, I'd like the city to follow some of the lead of some of the more progressive jurisdictions around the country. And allow duplexes and even triplexes and all single family zoning across the city. You know, I think that duplexes and triplexes can often be done within the neighborhood character of single family zoning. And they provide numerous environmental benefits that have been addressed before. And it would be a huge step forward for affordability. If every time there's a tear down in the city, instead of just having a three thousand or four thousand foot square foot mansion. Replace what was an affordable house, you could have two or three units on that same lot. I'd really like to see the city reduce or eliminate parking minimums. Starting in multifamily districts, but preferably citywide. I think that would be a huge policy advance for sustainability is just to scrap them altogether. And then not a particular proposal, but one thing that kind of, that troubles me is to go up and down Broadway and you see some of the developments occurring. This is on our most transit accessible corridor in the city. Near my apartment, there's a project, the Balsams, it's building five luxury, I think three thousand square foot plus condos on the most transit accessible site in the city. And it, it just seems like such a missed opportunity that that could have housed probably fifteen or twenty middle income or affordable housing units. And instead we're getting five gigantic luxury penthouses, which is not exactly the type of housing that the city needs. And I see that play out at thirty-three oh one Broadway as well, where a proposal for more. Mixed income and mixed use was ultimately shot down and we ended up with less density along the most transit and bike friendly corridor in the whole city. So to kind of conclude, I just really like planning board and city council to, to go boldly like we've never done before on housing. And encourage density in particular, low impact density and make it. Use some of the tools that we have available to reduce parking minimums, reduce requirements for ADUs to foster more affordable housing. More naturally occurring affordable housing throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Dressley, followed by Alexia Parks. Carol, you may unmute.
Yes, my name is Carol Dreseli. We, my husband and I bought a home almost twenty years ago that came with a legal ADU. And in lower table Mesa, we would not have been able to afford the neighborhood without the legal ADU. And we also just through the years have always had people live with us. In ADUs wherever we've lived or in bedrooms, whatever. We're in transition, we're seniors. My husband just retired September first. But over the last couple of years, we're debating whether or not to move to the mountains. We cannot afford, there are several aspects here of our complicated kind of situation. We're moving to the mountains, but we can't afford two houses. So we go back and forth to Boulder to this home and occasionally one of our three sons is there. It's pretty lonely sometimes upstairs in a five bedroom home. Recently, I guess there was some mistaking advertising, absolutely not intended. And we were ordered by the city to immediately stop renting any of the bedrooms upstairs, leave five empty bedrooms upstairs. As long as we have the ADU rented. And we've been fined something like over a thousand dollars a day until we stopped the ads immediately, but got that late. Just to wrap this up real quickly, we have my son who's been helping us with income stream. My son, my husband retired from forty-four years of teaching down at UCD. He's helped bring in people who have been professionals working with. With the state and locally and nursing homes and students working with Google. He's created a wonderful community, having at least two people upstairs and people down in the ADU. But the city says, no, that's not allowed, even though we have been surrounded by it for five years. We have houses, at least five of them around us scraped and taking it seems like a two-year average. To replace those scraped houses with multimillion dollar houses. I have counted up to twenty vehicles and workers in front of our house in the cul-de-sac working on these houses. And our cars have been broken into twice as well as some other neighbors. All of that is okay in the city. The scraping, the two years of rebuilding, the multimillion dollars. As the city is very concerned that now instead of our children living with us, that we have a couple of housemates upstairs living with us. In addition to the ADU that came with the property fifteen years ago. So we're not allowed to have housemates anymore and we're gone a lot. To our place in Estes or to help our son with the remodel and babysitting in Fort Collins. And the house upstairs, five bedrooms is to be left empty. Most of the time it doesn't make a bit of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for open comment is Alexia Parks. Alexia, you should be able to unmute now.
Thank you. This is my planning board meeting and so apologize if I jump right into what I'm interested in. And that is, I want to express my opposition to something called Area Three where we live against the. Base of Flagstaff Mountain and West Boulder. We, I have lived here.
Seems like we have lost you, Alexia.
And actually, that is something that's in the public hearing, I believe. So if Alexia isn't able to finish talking now, it's probably more appropriate that this particular issue be addressed.
Okay, can you hear me again right now?
We can.
Well, I will wait for that, but I, I want to express it because it is a historic. Area and I like, I've lived here fifty-one years and definitely want to preserve it without having it be incorporated into the city, which will allow the mansionization. Of a lot of sweet, small, affordable houses in this area.
And please make sure to raise your hand again during public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our list, Harmon. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. If anybody else from the public wants to speak, now's your last chance. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next matter, which is a public hearing item. With an agenda title as follows, Public Hearing and Planning Board Consideration of Land Use Map, Planning Areas Map, Policy. And Text Changes as Part of the Twenty-Twenty Midterm Update to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Maps indicating where the proposed changes, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan are located. And a description of each change can be found on the project website at, I will not read that, but it's on the website. For you at BoulderColorado.gov Boards and Commissions Planning Board. So I'm going to turn it over right now to our Development Services Manager and Guru Charles Pharoah. Charles, if you want to take it away and handle introducing this public hearing item for us, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Harmon. Good evening, members of the board. Gene Gads, a senior planner, will present staff's analysis this evening.
Great, thanks, Charles. Brenda, I need a, I need screen sharing allowed.
Okay, let me give you screen sharing. My apologies. And I'm just finding Eugene. Okay, you're gonna have to tell me how to do that.
Just make me a co-host.
Oh, I will. I had thought you were one. My apologies. Thanks for your patience with our glitch.
All right, thank you. And good evening, planning board members and community members. We are here tonight to. Present the analysis and recommendations for changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as part of the Twenty-Twenty Midterm Update. These include land use map, planning area map, policy and text changes. And this is one of four public hearings to consider and approve changes to the plan. The recommendations are a great team effort and I just want to call out my colleagues Jay Sagnat and Housing, Hala Panewig, the Attorney's Office. Jenny Imick in Asian Resources and our county colleagues Hannah Hippoly, the Boulder County Long Range Planning Manager who's here tonight too. And Alberto De Los Rios. I'll go quickly be going through, whoops, I'm supposed to be on the next slide. Sorry about that. There we go. Sorry about that. Um, well, I'll do a brief presentation of the recommendations. We'll have the public hearing. And then the planning board discussion and motions. As you know, the purposes of the midterm update are pretty limited in scope and they include. Public Request Process. The planning board and the city council completed that screening process for the public applications and the other list of items. For consideration for changes in the midterm update in June. And recommended moving forward with three public request land use changes. For further analysis and consideration of those, staff is recommending land use changes for two of those areas. We gathered a lot of community feedback on the third one at South Broadway, which I'll get to in just a few minutes. But we're not recommending a change at this time for that one. Also for consideration are six other areas identified for proposed land use or planning area changes. That implement the priorities that were identified in the comprehensive plan at the last major update. Reflect adopted area plans and reflect the location of the blue line that changed in two thousand sixteen. Also, our consideration for changes to recently acquired open space and mountain park lands. And there are several policy additions and clarifications that recommend, reflect adopted policy and plans. The analysis included in the staff reports evaluate the proposed changes based on the consistency with the comprehensive plan, potential impacts. And the effect on projections or the capital. The process outlined in the comp plan is that the city planning board and city council approve land use changes in Area One and Area Two at the Western Edge Properties. And changes in Area Three are approved by all four bodies. Some of the policy and text changes are only two body and some are four bodies are outlined in the staff report. I'm going to quickly move through the list of changes. The first one is at Thirtieth Street in Valmont. It's Phase Two A of the Transit Village Area Plan. And that's a recommended change from mixed use industrial and service commercial to mixed use business to implement the recommendations, the recommended land use changes. That were. Outlined in the two thousand seven Transit Village Area Plan for this phase of the plan. The intent is for this west side of Thirtieth Street to transform similarly to the east side where there's mixed use and housing. And also this is our future location for the relocation of Fire Station Three. Phase Two A of the Transit Villager Plan, you see on this little part that's on the west side of Thirtieth. Phase Two A of the Transit Villager Plan you see on this little part that's on the west side of Thirtyth Street. This is a moving ahead now because we've done some work to identify the Bluff Street connection, which was identified in the TVAP implementation plan as the trigger for this uh, changes in this area. Phase one is largely complete and um Phase Two B was discussed during the screening process. Um, and we just uh, determined that we did not have the resources in the, in the work plan to take that on at this time, but um was discussed as an option to be prioritized in future work plans. Change B or one of the next ones is to implement the recommendations that were part of the Alpine Balsam Area Plan. These are um, changing on the city-owned property. Um, some of the areas from public to high-density residential and mixed-use business on portions of the site that are not intended for the future uses of city services and the recommend the these changes are um they align the, the recommended changes that were outlined in the area plan are a little more specific than what we're seeing here on the comp plan. This is just our first step to take to um in the implementation process for this. Um, you're seeing the variations of colors here. These ones were, are, are the more specific land uses that were detailed in the area plan that will inform our zoning. And I'm happy to report we've um, done some work to um, on the, completed the initial analysis to determine some of the best paths forward for zoning and we're going to be recommending moving ahead with um, form-based code to craft more specific urban design um, and character tools for this area. That process will likely be underway um, early next year and um, will it's anticipated that we'll have um, a, a much more uh, in-depth community process to gu- guide those zoning decisions for those zoning in this, for Alpine Balsam. The next change um, was one of the public requests for um uh, changes from the low-density residential to another land use that might support business residential or mixed use um, at thirteen forty-five South Broadway. We um we got a lot of community feedback on this. Even in this challenging time of COVID, we had um, over forty community members in the nearby area participate on the heard Boulder questionnaire um, as well as virtual meetings and um uh, communication with, with us, with staff. While there is a lot of support for the air, for um, changes, it was pretty mixed. Um, and folks really were cautious about uh, not having a more specific development plan for the area. I think there's a lot of potential. Um, our staff thinks there's a lot of potential for some changes here, but we're not comfortable with recommending any particular one at this time. There may be some uh, options for changes here uh, with the code amendment process for um, fifteen-minute neighborhoods or for, for the um for the applicant that come in with um, some different types of a concept at a later time. The um, the next change is at sixty-five hundred Odell Place and the recommendation is a change from mixed-use industrial to high-density residential. This land use um, change, the, the, the current land use is a mixed, mixed-use industrial and the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan describes a mix of housing and light industrial for this area. Residential uses at this location would be compatible with the surrounding land use designation and uses, particularly, particularly the existing high-density residential that's to the north of the site. The next change is at uh, Forty Seventh Street of it foothills and Valmont. This is a change from medium-density residential to transitional business. It's really just to reflect that the current uses are not residential. They have, the site has always been used as more professional office and personal service uses and this change would reflect that. The next change is at Hillside, nearby areas. It's a little hard to see, but these um, the land use colors were applied in kind of a really funky way to about half parcels on, in several areas. So we're just recommending the cleanup of those for low-density residential and the parcels that are privately owned and um, the correct application of public uh, land use for the school district and university parcels. There are also recommended changes plant for uh, planning area changes from Area Three to Area Two for the Western Edge properties that are now below the blue line. The location of the blue line determines properties that are eligible to receive city water. In two thousand sixteen, the city proposed and voters approved a ballot measure amending the location of the blue line. This was aimed at clarifying the location of the boundary and also to allow provision of water service to existing developed properties. The measure specifically reinforced the intent to keep, to protect the foothills' open space and mountain backdrop and to limit new development or the expansion of existing development. For these developed parcels that are currently in Area Three and proposed for Area Two, this change would allow them to receive city water and sewer services, but additional steps would be required before a property is annexed or receives water from the city. And all, and any redevelopment um, without annexation is regulated as it is today by the county. So we have some of these properties on Fifth Street and then um, a handful of properties also on uh, Hawthorne Avenue and up by Second Street. So on these maps, you'll see the dark blue line is the new blue line and the dotted line is um, the old nineteen fifty-six version of blue line. For these, these uh, handful of properties on Hawthorne, they previously had no land use designation, so we're proposing also a land use designation um, with low-density residential on those. Last couple batch of changes, um, uh, we have changes also related to the uh, change in the blue line for city-owned open space and mountain, mountain parks properties. Um, there's a bunch of these along the Western Edge where um, they, their location relatively the blue line, or the blue line's location changed. Requiring these to be either a change from Area Two to Area Three or from Area One to Area Three annex to reflect the intent to keep those as um, rural character and open space. And then lastly, we have a handful of other um, land use changes that reflect uh, acquired properties. So most of these um, are owned by the city and would have got a new land use designation of open space acquired and a couple of them are open space development rights. The policy changes that are um, I, I have been identified were either through um, adopted area plans, adopted other policies. We have intergovernmental cooperation regarding consultation with indigenous people um, about cultural resources. This was identified through the Open Space and Mountain Parks Master Plan to reflect our um, longstanding um, memorandums of understanding. Now, for that consultation, there's a uh, amendment to the annexation policy to even further reflect the intent of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen blue line changes. Um, and that annexation eligibility and intent to um not expand developed properties in those areas. We have several changes to transportation policies um, proposed mainly to reflect the um, changes in direction that was adopted in the Transportation Master Plan. It was adopted in two thousand nineteen. Have the new affordable housing goal of fifteen percent for all residential properties. Um, amending um, our, some of our housing policies. Also, the um, policies reflecting homeless strategy. And then a new section or revisions to our section on sub-community and area plan, area planning to reflect our um the community planning program and the direction that was received from planning board and city council on that last year. So with that, we'll be visiting the city council in uh, December fifteenth with the same recommendations and then to the planning commission um, for the handful of changes that are required for body review um, in January and to the county commissioners as well. And with that, um, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jean. So, you know, just to kind of keep the um keep the uh, question piece moving along in a comprehensible fashion. I want to break it up into um, three areas um, which track with these motions. So let's um, ask our planning board questions of staff. Should we have any around items that are um, relevant to motion number one? So if you look at your table on the first uh, well, it's sorry, the second and third page of this um, item in your packet. Um, let's ask questions about A to G, which are the uh, map changes um, to start with, and then we can move on to the next two categories. John?
Yeah, I would like to do this in a manner. Uh, I need to recuse myself from the consideration of the parcels H and G that are close to Linden uh, and Pi and the Fourth Street because of uh, owning some property within six hundred feet. So I'm, I'm hoping that I can participate in the discussion, discussion and decisions for the other parts, but I recuse myself from that part.
Okay, um, Jean, for now, can you pull your screen down so we can see everybody, please? Okay, so John, I don't think there's any really neat way of um of having you, you know, leave the, the, the meeting the way you normally would for a recusal. So I'm just going to ask you not to make any comments around uh, those uh, items that you have issues with, that you have any conflict with.
That, that sounds fine and I'll refrain from voting on those also.
Very good. Does anyone else have any items that would require any disclosure or potential recusal for um, the matter in front of us today? Okay, and are there any ex parte communications or, or any other reasons why anybody needs to make any disclosures? Okay, then let's um, let's move on. So now's our opportunity to ask questions of Jean around the map changes uh, that are being proposed as letters A through G in our staff report. Sarah?
Um, thank you so much, Jean. Thank you and on your fellow staffers for all this work that you've done. It's very complex. Um, I really appreciate it. I basically have one question about um, uh, the TVAP and one question about Alpine Balsam. So I'll just start with the TVAP question and we'll come back around. Can you just explain uh, to me um, how the city will square the difference between the proposed land use for mixed-use business, which um, a lot could require housing versus the zoning, which is BMS, which um uh, the, the housing options is, are pretty limited in that zoning um, on, on our use tables. Uh, in particular, um, it prohibits um, uh, residential on the ground for floor except for access to residential, but use the narrative is that this could look a lot like the steel yards, but if you look at the steel yard housing, they actually are, much of it is um, townhomes that are accessed. I mean, they're townhomes. They don't have first floor office space. So i- I'm just trying to understand how the city would go about sort of squaring that circle a little bit, given what you're trying to accomplish with this area.
Right, and so Sarah, it is a little bit, um, it is a little bit complex with this area. The uh, the rezoning for Phase One of TVAP um, really uh, had much more incentive, provided a lot more incentive for the creation of housing. And with this um the current zoning as BT one um, and yeah, potential proposed zoning with the BMS um, that's described in the plan. There's not as much of that incentive. Um, so where, what we're thinking, and there are actually a couple of uh properties that um, have some projects that are um, being considered uh, redevelopment for housing in this area. What we're thinking is that um, instead of a, a blanket rezoning on this, um, it's going to be more of an option, more of a, more of an opt-in if the BMS um, works for those um, properties. So folks could be able to do the um redevelop still under the BT one, but have um, the considerations that are outlined in the plan for some of the urban design uh, character elements.
So does that mean, just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Does that mean that there would be an opportunity for that same kind of town home, attached dwelling, town home that is in steel yards? Um, because we know that that's a, a type, a housing type that is in much demand um uh, for low, uh, moderate and middle-income families. I'm just, would the BT allow that?
I might look to Charles to um, help out with that, not knowing the ins and outs of some of those zoning districts.
Hey, sir, that's a great question. Um, ET one, and I'll have to crack my code open here, but um, if memory serves me, you would be able to do that style of uh, town home unit where you have not only entry to the unit at the ground floor, where you could actually have ground floor residential units similar to what you see on the other side of Thirty-Fifth and Steel Yards. Okay, great. And so even though it would be zone BMS, there'd be some understanding that there was some flexibility there for different types of housing? Sure, absolutely. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions regarding the map changes?
Oh, wait, um, Sarah, did you have one on Alpine Balsam also?
She was going to hold that for, for a minute and let some other people speak. Thanks. Sarah, Lisa?
Um, yeah, so I had a question for staff, um, just around kind of that second phase of, of TVAP. What, what are we doing regarding loss of industrial space in there? Um, it seems to me that, you know, I, I, and I'm not necessarily, I know it's been in the plan for a long time. There's a lot to like about um, what's happening there. I'm just curious, you know, we we've already lost some and I'm just curious whether those people are, are leaving um, the city of Boulder, if we have a sense of where they're going to go and, and what that's doing to industrial, light industrial specifically.
Lisa, I'm not sure I totally understand the uh, the question.
So let me, let me try to rephrase. So um, and now I'm blanking on their name, but there was like an air supply company that was in the original portion um, that, you know, moved on. And so I'm, I'm just wondering as we rezone areas that were allowing for light industrial use um, to allow for other kinds of uses, whether they're commercial or mixed use, um, including residential. Um, you know, over, are, are we losing all that industrial space? Do we see it moving elsewhere? You know, kind of what, what do we expect that to do to the presence of light industrial within the city of Boulder proper or more broadly within the county?
Um, I'm not sure I know the answer necessarily. We've, we're definitely looking at um, the viability and, and exploring a lot around light industrial and the potential conversions in the East Boulder sub-community planning process. And there's a lot of concern um, and a lot of different ideas about the future of those types of uses. Um, I do think that if we move ahead on the, the rest, the phase to be or the rest of the, the bulk of phase two for the Transit Village Area Plan, um, it, it would behoove us to take a look at the um, the recommendations in light of um, our, some of our primary employers or other um, key industries for those. But I think that, that option also is um, a little less heavy on the housing than the first phase.
I guess I'd also add, Jean, that the um, adopted area plan, the Transit Village Area Plan still does preserve quite a large swath of industrial space um, along Goose Creek and Pearl Street, uh, basically foothills to um, Thirty-Fifth there. So we still have a, a, a quite a big swath of land use that um, is will remain industrial mixed use.
will remain industrial mixed use in perpetuity as part of the plan.
Cool. Thank you, Charles.
Anyone else? John?
Yeah, I wanted to inquire about the changes proposed for, for West Hawthorne. That is to say, uh, the parcels A, B, and C that are shown to be now in, in the county and in area three and are proposed to change to area two. What services do those three parcels presently get from the city?
They don't. They don't have water and sewer at this point. Um, but with the change to the blue line, they're now, they're now below the blue line. So be eligible for that should they want to pursue annexation.
And actually, my, particularly on the parcel A and B, are there presently residences or houses in those parcels? That are, that are above the blue line?
They are now below the blue line. They were above the blue line.
Right, they, they were above, but they're now below. And there are existing houses there at the moment.
My understanding of those, those are developed parcels.
Okay, and then just one more. In the maps of that area, you all, there's also one house that's further south that, if I understand correctly, uh, there's no change proposed here. But in the maps with the little yellow indication lines, uh, you show that there is some change proposed in the southern, uh, the southern loft there. So I was a bit confused about what, what is happening there.
Okay, I'm not sure if that's, um, so there's, there was one to the, to the south that was already partially area two.
Right.
And then a change to, um, since it was already area two. And is that the one? I try to pull those up.
That's, that's the one I'm talking about. And in the, in the overall map, where you show sort of the yellow patches where changes are proposed, that indicates, uh, there's a yellow patch in that, on that area too. But I don't see where there's any change proposed when we go into the details here.
That may just, that slight error in that overall map. The more detailed ones show exactly which parcels.
Okay, so there's no change proposed for, for that?
The one that's already area two, well, it's, it's, it's already area two.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts, questions?
Catch, John. Eagle eye.
I'm, I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thanks, John. David?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify on the properties of between Aurora oh, and a little past Euclid on, on Uni Hill, uh, budding up against area three. Um, though, there was some, some concern I saw from the community about, um, you know, development potential changing from this. And I, I, um, from what I can see right now, uh, you know, if they, you know, certainly, um, if they are moved into area two, they become eligible for an annexation. But without annexation, they're still in the county, right? And they're still subject to the county. There would be no change. And right now, that's actually zone forestry, so they're kind of out of compliance density wise with that county zoning, it looks like to me. So, yeah, I mean, I just, um, I don't think there would be any additional development potential from this action. It would, nothing would really change there.
That's, that's our interpretation too, David. And that was the intent of the blue line changes. It was very clear in all of the materials that, that were prepared during that ballot measure that, that the change is really only intended to allow service provision for already developed properties, but not to allow um, expansion or additional development potential. Hannah is here also from Boulder County, if, if she would like to address any of that. There, these properties also are within the, it's the view protection overlay district um, that would still be in, in, in effect under review with the county.
Okay, anyone else, or shall I jump over back to Sarah?
And I'm just going to mention, um, because Jean didn't mention it, but there's actually a corresponding policy change associated with these properties too, for the annexation policies that makes clear that there's no intent to allow any additional dwelling units on these properties.
And I also wanted to clarify that the blue line uh, was already moved as a result of the 2016 election, so that isn't being changed now. That's been in place for four years now, right? Because I, I saw a little bit of confusion about that. So the blue line isn't moving. Okay, thank you.
Okay, John, did you want to talk directly to that, or should I go Sarah?
Uh, no, I, just on this, uh, these parcels here, are those houses presently receiving city water and sewer services?
The ones along this street is a mix. There are some that have city water, some that have water and sewer. Um, at least one that has none that is, um, desiring to get, um, to be on city, city services. So it is, it's a bit of a mix.
Thank you.
Hey, Sarah?
Thanks, Harmon. So if I might, I have a question actually about Alpine Balsam. Um, I just was, I think you referenced this, what is my question? But I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. The, the fact that the recommended Boulder Valley Comp Plan land use change is a singular um, zone or land use designation does not preempt the different parcel plans that were approved as part of the concept plan? Is, is that a correct interpretation of what you said?
That's correct. Yeah, um, we, we worked too hard. You get all of those areas uh, specified within the Alpine Balsam area plan. And that's what would guide the, the future zoning.
Okay, thank you. And I also just wanted to say that I would really um, appreciate the opportunity, whenever it comes along in our agenda in the, in the coming year, to talk about some of the financial opportunities, uh, or the opportunities to use financing to get the most affordable housing we can out of this site. And I will leave it at that.
Great, thanks, Sarah. Anybody else have any questions about, um, this first tranche of, uh, comp plan update changes? No? Okay, well, then let us move on to questions that we might want to ask staff about the second group, which are the area two and three properties that require four body review. Any questions about that? That's, uh, H and I in your packet.
This is primarily the space and mountain parks. Properties.
You know, there's a really useful table in there, Jean. Uh, thank you for that, which lists all of the different properties that have been acquired in the last couple of years that are um, proposed for these land use changes. And from what I could see, almost everything is going to be um, open space acquired with a few notable exceptions for private easements and stuff. No questions about this? Okay, I'll just make a comment. It's a lot of acreage. Now, the program's doing pretty well. Yeah. Uh, and then finally, policy and text changes. Any questions from the board to staff around these policy and text changes? This is Jay in your packet. If, if there are none, I'm going to, uh, open it up for public comment. Tonight, we, we don't have an applicant because these are coming to us from staff, which is already presented to us. And, uh, you know, I just want to, in the spirit of comity, C O M I T Y, with, um, with our neighboring jurisdiction or surrounding jurisdiction. Hannah, do you have any, anything that you'd like to add? I'm asking Hannah Hippley from Boulder County.
Thank you, Hannah Hippley from Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting. I do not have anything to add. It's been a pleasure working with Jean and um, we have reviewed all of these changes at a staff, at our staff level and brought in our necessary inter-agency partners, like our transportation folks and housing and human services. And we are comfortable with things as they are.
Okay, well, thanks for being part of our process. You know, we enjoy coordinating with you. So why don't I turn it back over to our moderator? And if you don't mind, um, would you please handle the public comment? Brenda?
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, so just as we did with open comment at the beginning, please indicate your wish to participate in public comment on these issues at this time by using the raised hand button followed, found at the bottom of your screen. I'm, I'm going to give just a minute for people to find that button so we can see what that list, list starts to look like. We do have three hands on the list now. Um, so I'll start there with Alexia Parks, followed by Donna George, followed by Laura Scheinbaum. Alexia, you should, whoops, you were unmuted. You should be able to unmute again. Oh, and I'm sorry, um, let me just clarify quickly, Harmon. Three minutes again as well?
Yes, three minutes per person. And, and we're not doing any, um, any pooling like we have in the past. So just each individual gets three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. So three minutes per individual without pooling. I'll again hold up hand signs and appreciate all of your cooperation with that. Um, Alexia, if you're ready, you may speak.
Thank you. I'll speak quickly. Um, it was, I'm speaking to area G or exhibit G. One, there were two slides. It would be, um, if, actually, Jane, if you would put that up, that might be helpful. Area G and the first slide that you showed. So I'll be talking while she's putting that up, if that's possible to share it on your screen. Um, whether it is or not, I'll go ahead. Um, what I will say, boots on the ground. I've lived here 51 years. My family lives within walking distance. And this is home base for our three generations of family who've grown up and lived in Boulder, Colorado. Billionaires are coming up our dirt roads, there's three of them that are dirt roads. Uh, minus one of them. And, um, it's an area that's called Snowbound. Historically, there are like five homes in that area that are, um, one of them was built probably around 1910. Um, and the Ezra built, um, uh, like in 1920. And another one was our, the one I live in was 1948. Uh, and others are in that similar range. Billionaires are coming in and offering us five million dollars or more for our homes. They're looking at the land. They're like, they're saying this is the last stand between the city and the, um, City Mountain Park and Flagstaff Mountain. Everybody wants to get the highest, biggest, best view. We've seen what's happened directly to the north. There is a home immediately to the north. It's the last one that's shown on that exhibit one. Um, exhibit G one, uh, that they came in, they took and knocked down Larry Gold's beautiful stone house. It was historic, I'm sorry, Larry Penfolds' house was knocked down. Historic stone house and a 15,000 square foot mansion was put in, uh, in the early, mid 1990s. The, um, one just to the north of that particular one, which is not on your map right now, is an all glass house. So anybody looking at Flagstaff Mountain from the city or any other angle will see sun rising on an all glass home up against the base of Flagstaff. We are south of that. So we are south of the glass home. We are south of the 15,000 square foot home that formerly was, um, Larry Penfolds' home, historic home. And, and I'm immediately south. In 1990 and through 1992, the billionaire who moved to the north of me attempted to put a home in that was denied by the county. It was in two little cottages that are there. They're now directly south of me. I, coming from the top down, um, the second one, this will be the third one in that zone. And there's two small cottages that are about 800 square feet each in diameter. They're a wonderful, low, affordable housing, and people live there in that, you know, very low, wonderful rent that's been kept that way for 40 years. And they're historic and they're beautiful. They're in my pictures every Christmas. They're beautiful with snow on them. Uh, they are, um, they have, um, been, uh, the mansion that was planned there was for uh, 35 foot high, 100 foot long home that was denied by the county. This would become an area because of the vast summers being offered to us. Uh, an area of bright lights, like a line of lighthouses lighting up the sky. We also are stewards, if you want to talk about.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, it's a low-cost strategy for open space. We're keeping it, it's open space. Thank.
My apologies for having to mute you, Alexia. We do have to be fair with our time limit. Um, I'm coming next to Donna George, followed by Laura Scheinbaum. Donna, you should be able to unmute now.
Uh, hi, before I speak, I, I'd like to say that we should be able to pool. I have both my husband and my daughter here, and I have done extensive research that I need to present tonight. There are only three speakers, and this goes to my point about, is this really, do you really want citizen input, or do you just want to skis back? What, what the county and the, the city put them, themselves? I want to be able to, my husband's here, say hello.
All right.
My daughter's here, say hello. Hi. So I should pool to at least nine minutes.
So Brenda, how many people do we have scheduled for public comment tonight?
Uh, it looks like just one other person has their hand up. Normal polling rules would be, um, three people pooling to Jean, help me, I, or.
Seven minutes. Three people would receive seven minutes. So I'm going to ask, um, are you keeping time, Brenda? Let me ask, just reset Donna's clock to seven minutes and, and we'll give her her seven minutes tonight.
Thank you, Harmon.
You're welcome.
Donna, your time will start now.
Hey, Donna, you're, you're muted now. Can you unmute and we'll restart the clock again?
Just push that button for you, Donna. You should be able to unmute. Am I there?
You are there.
Okay.
All right.
And it's Donna George, who live at 4661 Telling Hall Court. My main thing I want to talk about tonight is the change in request plan for 6500 Adele Place. Um, I was reading, um, the reason why they want to put it in, and they said, while residential uses are allowed under the current industrial general zoning, the site does not meet the two acre incise threshold for site review a requirement for consideration of residential and industrial uses. I did extensive research in the code, and actually for IG, it needs a use review. It does not need a site review. To have a site review, the minimum amount is two acres for a voluntary site review. And if you have five acres, you have to have a mandatory site review. So the, um, Boulder View Apartments actually are in the IG zone, and, um, they did a use review. So not only that, this is a mix right now, the plan for the Gun Barrel Comprehensive Plan. And Sarah explained how we have to follow the Alpine Area Plan. Well, we need to follow the Gun Barrel Center Community Plan. And their thing for mixed-use industrial residential district is this area will characterize a mix of residential compatible light industrial uses is intended to provide a transition between the more intense commercial areas in the established residential areas to northeast. Development in this area would be less intense than in the retail areas with mainly two to three-story buildings. The first floor or street front uses would be predominantly industrial in character, while the uses above the first floor may include industrial, residential, or limited office uses. Lisa also noticed that the light industrial spaces are getting lost. So we need to follow the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. You cannot change this to high-density residential. Art and craft or office space, uh, studio spaces are allowed both in the IMS and IG zoning. The IMS zoning allows duplexes, attached dwellings, townhouses in an L3. L3 means that allowed by right, if at least 50% of the floor area of the building is for non-residential use, such as an art and craft studio, coffee shop, restaurants. I also want to note that, um, the Left Hand Ballet Carrier just put in an article about the Bader House in Niwot. It was formerly called TR Property that burnt. They are, it's a quarter of an acre in size. This, this property is one acre in size. They plan on putting in five residential units, averaging 570 square feet, plus two commercial units totaling 977 square feet. Boulder, Boulder Housing Partners have worked with Habitat for Humanity in the past at the Palo Park site, and they can actually do that here. It can be a. And they can actually do that here. It can be a live work. Live work is allowed, I believe, in both the IG and the IMS. So you can have people who live and work. They can have art studios. You can make how you can have housing for sale, which is probably better because people get equity and input in the area. You can have housing for the who's that work nearby, the people who work in the water treatment plants nearby, teachers. So this needs to, another thing I want to say is in the the plan, the Gun Barrel Community Plan, it says implementation of the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan will occur over a long period of time through a combination of actions for both the public and private sectors. The formation of a Gun Barrel Business Alliance is fundamentally important to keep the main many private owners briefed on the community center plan and working collaborative collaboratively for a neighborhood benefit as well as their individual self-interest. And that's where I'm going with this. I have I have followed for the last five years housing partners and I have followed their their community output. Palo Park, the people just wanted to go do a few less units, but oh no, that wasn't going to be financially feasible for the investors who get a guaranteed four, seven or nine percent return on their investment. Plus get to depreciate the thing. And then when they sell it, us, the taxpayers are paying for that. So these should be for sale units for the public. It should follow the Gun Barrel Comprehensive Plan. And you should, there's no reason for them to have to change this. It can remain as mixed use industrial. It can have an IG or IMS zoning. They can change the zoning to IMS if they want, which was sounds like because that's mixed use or mixed service industrial. It makes a lot of sense. What does high residential industry, high residential density allow for them? Well, I have also researched a chart here. Mixed use developments require the greater amount of the residential or non-residential standard for open space. If BHP goes to high density residential, they will have to, they won't have to do as much open space. The people there have already complaining that they don't hardly, I drove by there today with my daughter. There's very limited park space there. There's very small dog runs that were the other two apartment building complexes in the area and a small community gardens. But no park for the people in the area. They could have a park here. There's a whole many things that they could do. But you can't just go willy nilly. They did this at the last minute. They didn't do it in the timeline they were supposed to do it. And it's all just so that they can go higher and more density. This has to follow, just as they others have said, needs to follow the plan. And the plan specifically states that that's for mixed use industrial. It needs to remain mixed use industrial. These the previous speaker took a talked about $5 million for lots. Money is coming into this area and citizens in their communities are getting lost. So we need to actually listen to the communities, listen to the plans that are in place and actually have input from the citizens who live in those communities in the plans on what is affecting their communities, not just a willy nilly, you got affordable housing, you can do whatever you want because that is not true. You need to listen to the citizens. There is no way that you can change this. This needs to stay mixed use industrial. I also want to say that you can actually get a apartment cheaper than Boulder Housing Partners at Meadow Creek Apartments in Gun Barrel. There is a, I think it's the one bedroom one Meadow Creek is 1,199 for 650 square feet. And it's slow at Boulder Housing Partners is 1,240 for 651 square feet. Some of these others, they have higher square feet for about the same amount.
Time Donna, please raise your thoughts.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you so much. Next on the list, we have Laura Scheinbaum, followed by David Adamson. And if anyone else would like to speak, now is the time to please raise your hand. And I am seeing Lynn Segal as well. So we will have Laura first, followed by David. Laura, you should be able to unmute now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am Laura Scheinbaum. I'm Director of Real Estate Development for Boulder Housing Partners. We just heard a lot of sort of awful things about Boulder Housing Partners, but I do think you all know as well as the Housing Authority of the City of Boulder. We are a development company as well as a property management company that works exclusively for affordable housing, serving low and moderate income residents in the city of Boulder. We are, we know all about affordable housing. I'm not going to do a whole lot of preaching at you tonight about the benefits of affordable product, but we do know that the about 36% if not more of the Boulder workforce qualifies for affordable housing. And given the current economic climate going on with the pandemic, we are certain that that's gone even higher. There is a lot of instability in the renters community right now. And so affordable rental housing is still a very important tool in in the city looking to do diversity and equitable, stable housing. We just heard about the Seaglow Apartments. We did just lease up at that at that site, 38 units in one month. So the demand for that product was extensive. We also just leased up 41 units at the Canopy Apartments, which is along Valamon in between Folsom and Broadway, Folsom and 20th Street, excuse me. And again, leased it up in record time with record interest. All of our product is priced according to area median income and Boulder Housing Partners dives deep into area median income. So while the Seaglow Apartments might be more expensive than a community in in Gun Barrel, we also really look to take our rents as low as possible to dive into those, really those who are most in need for affordable product. I am here tonight to support the land use change for 6500 Odell. We are under contract to purchase that site. We do not, we've not acquired it as of yet pending a land use change by this board and city council. We would land bank that and go through an extensive community engagement process like we do with all of our properties to see what is needed in the community and work with neighbors to make sure that we are being reflective of that need. With that said, we are also committed to the providing as much affordable housing per mission. So we are certainly I'm not going to shy away from the fact that we would look to have as many units on that site as possible and to help with the jobs housing imbalance as well as just the affordable need in the community. So there's lots of benefit of affordable housing and I'm not, like I said, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I just wanted to say thank you to Jean for all the work that you've done on the research for this the site. And then thank you to the planning board as well. We value our relationship with you all and appreciate all of your efforts on behalf of Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next we have David Adamson, followed by Lynn Segal. And now is a good time, if anyone else would like to participate, to please use the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. David, you should be able to unmute now.
Thank you so much Brenda and I, we were a participant, Gruce Creek Community Land Trust was a participant in the midterm update and our pilot program which had its birth, you know, from the 2017 update and thanks to some beautiful work by staff like Jay Segnet and 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 other activists, we got the beginning of, you know, very good start on that. And at the urging of Bob Gates and despite our reservations, we got involved in the process because we were afraid, oh, this is going to hold us back. And you know, we're desperate to to get something moving on this innovative project. And I, I was very disappointed in learning, which I could have known if I'd been smarter, but that we can't really do anything important in the midterm update. I, I was shocked that this attempt by citizens, you know, after many, many years of public engagement in our neighborhood and and you know, years of effort and working, starting with the, you know, Boulder Housing program in 2014, 2015 to to respond to an urgent need for workforce and family housing that this idea couldn't go forward because it just, we can't do anything very important in that time. So I would just like to have the board and staff reconsider what is done in this interim period. We don't have staff. We've, we've been trying to get staff to work with us on this going forward, which was promised in previous retreats and now maybe we can get it in this retreat, but there's no staff capacity for it. But Jean did awesome work on this. Steph does beautiful, beautiful work, but I'm kind of suggesting that it's like the banality of evil in Hannah Aaron's book where beautiful people work on behalf of a system that's really not working very well in in this case, or is, you know, I'm not saying the city of Boulder is evil. I'm saying there are consistent policy of allowing massive gentrification in this town where we can have the balsam, we can have 940 North Street, six 1.5 million dollar condos in a high residency residency area that can move forward. And nothing against the great people building that. So you know, that's okay. But we desperately need this, but we, we, we don't have the staff to do something innovative now. So I just really like us to explore that. And and finally, I just want to say, we certainly support the whatever needs to be done to help 6500 Odell. Boulder Housing Partners is out there hustling, trying to get things done. And some, some city council people have the temerity to chide them that maybe it didn't, didn't, they didn't follow every every detail of the process. They're trying to help the people of this area. So thank you very much. And I just hope we can reconsider what we're doing in this midterm update.
Thank you, David. And next we have Lynn Segal. Lynn, you should be able to unmute.
Let's be clear. Let's be crystal clear. It's called growth. And it doesn't pay for itself. And you can get all the affordable housing and all the density that you want. And the more affordable, each, each extra affordable house has service workers for it. And where do they come from? David Adamson? The jobs housing imbalance. Boulder Housing Partners. More and more evictions than any other housing offer in town. Lytech, low income housing tax credits. Don't take the bait. Don't do it. The more housing, the more housing, the more upper end housing, the more lower end housing, the more balsam on one side of the street. And on the other side of the street, Boulder Community Alpine Balsam. Oh, we're going to get it in cheap. No, growth is not cheap. Growth is gross reservoir. Growth is not sustainable. You can't do it. Not when you're approving elevators, car elevators at 1737 Pearl on the one hand. And then supporting Lytech funds and Oz Opportunity Zones at 29th Street. And Macy's coming in the day before the moratorium to get their deal pulled off. What a joke. Planning is planning for this for sustaining the common good. And you are not doing it and you need to change. Everyone here that said tonight Gun Barrel, yeah, the same thing. Odell, no way. You can't build your way out of this one, Harmon. And David. And Lisa. And Peter. And Lu, Lu Peter and John, every single one of you, you too, Sarah. You can't build your way out of it. Stop already. Stop the growth. Done.
And thank you, Lynn. I see no other hands up at this time, Harmon.
Okay, so next up is for us to deliberate on these proposed changes to the comp plan. I see it's 7:46 and I imagine the deliberation is going to take some time. So I'm going to call for a break. Let's take seven minutes, be back at 7:53. We'll see you then.
Okay.
All right, folks, I see I'm a minute late. I apologize for that. So it's time to begin deliberating on the items that we have in front of me of us. And I've asked Jean to prepare three separate motions. And she has, and.
Harmon, would you like me to put those up?
Who just spoke?
Would you like me to put them up?
Yeah, sure. So as you'll see, when Jean puts the motions up, again, they're grouped by the, the three groups, by the grouping that we already have asked our questions in. And I think for, for the sake of an organized discussion, we can probably, rather than just deliberate and then make three motions, I think we can deliberate around the first group and make a motion to that group of items and then do the same with the second and third groups. Does any planning board member or city staff have a problem with that or a better idea?
As, as I mentioned before, I need to recuse myself from one of the, one of the decisions along Linden. And see, I'm not sure exactly which one that is. But if we can separate that out.
John, one. I think what we can do is, is we can just record your vote as being a yea or a nay for that group with, uh, with a recusal as it, as it relates to that one property, okay?
If that's fine with me, if Ella thinks that's okay.
And, and the only way that that would change anything is if you would have been the fourth yea, for example, and on that particular, uh, that particular item.
Right, I, I'm, I'm not sure that it will be critical, but I just wanted to go on record as not, not participating in that one.
Okay, can, can you, can you look in your packet and tell the board which lettered item A through, I guess, uh?
See, it's, uh?
A and I that you're speaking about?
Let's see, attachment C. Attachment H, number four.
For the city-owned open space? Parcel?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's it.
Harmon, I think it may be better if, if you have a separate motion on that one.
Just do, just pull that one out, H4, and just vote on it separately with six of us?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to cause that problem.
John, that is much appreciated. Thank you for, um, for staying on top of that. Appreciate that a lot. Okay, so any other issues? And I can't see all of you with the, um, with the motions up. So just speak if you have one. Okay, so Jean, you can pull it down. And we're discussing just A to G. And I think, uh, what I'll do is I'm going to open it up for just any general thoughts that anyone has first to set the stage. And then maybe we'll, we'll try to speed things up with some negative polling. So, um, does anybody want to start us off? Sarah?
Um, so, uh, two separate thoughts. One is I, I shared Lisa, I share Lisa's concerns about, uh, sort of industrial land death by a thousand cuts. And, um, just want to articulate that. And then I have a specific, uh, concern or question that I'd like to talk through with my fellow board members about, um, item G. If I'm understanding the concern from the public who spoke, the, the concern is that, um, by moving this, these properties or some of these properties from Area 3 to Area 2, you are allowed, the city would be a lot, enabling, the development of significantly large homes because of market forces. And that kind of goes against what the 26, if I'm understanding this correctly, what the 2016 Blue Line ballot measure articulated, which was, um, to not expand opportunities for additional or expanded development. And, um, that's a long, a long, uh, A to B to C thinking. I want to first make sure that I'm understanding it correctly or articulating this correctly. And then if I am, just to say, I, I'm concerned about that.
Hannah, are you, are you jockeying to say something?
Well, I just am not sure if it's appropriate at this point in time to jump in.
It is. You, you understand the, the Area 1, 2, and 3 map. And, and you're, you're perfectly welcome to talk about that to the board.
Yeah, um, so I can explain to you Boulder County's regulations right now. These properties are all in the forestry zone district. They are all currently developed. So there's a residence on, um, all of the ones that we're talking about. There is a view protection overlay zone on them as well. And that overlay zone has been around the way before me, but I believe it was adopted prior to our site plan review regulations. And it specifically limits the heights of development on these properties as well as our site plan review requirements have some neighborhood compatibility parameters to them, which, um, may result in different development than could occur in this city. I don't have a, a good understanding of what the city might allow. But there's nothing preventing any of these homes right now from being purchased by a property owner who wants to scrape it and coming through our process to build a new home. That happens all the time. It happens along this edge of the city quite often, both within city limits and in those kind of county pockets. So I don't see that changing significantly, um, you know?
Hannah, can I just ask a follow-up to that? If I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, though, some of these homes are not hooked, they're not currently hooked up to city, they, to city water and sewer. So the, the, there may be homes, actually, some of these parcels are not developed, or the homes that are on them are not on city water. So bringing them into the city would enable a kind of, uh, development that is currently not possible. I, I, again, I'm sorry that I'm sort of hesitating, but it's.
Well, maybe I can speak to the service, service ability directly then. If the properties do not have city services at this time, they likely have a well and a septic system. And that's common all over Boulder County in some pretty challenging terrain. So, you know, we have quite large homes, expensive homes that operate on wells and septic throughout the county. So it, I don't necessarily see that as a significant limitation. City services are easier on a property owner in that they don't require continual maintenance, uh, that sort of thing. So they're appealing for that reason. We have, it's pretty common in the county that when people are faced with a failing septic system, that that's when they'll investigate annexation to an adjacent municipality. It's a big investment to repair a septic system. So, you know, the lifespan of those things is limited. And, um, a lot of this development here is, you know, some of it's quite old. It's likely, you know, those kinds of repairs would need to be made in order to, or an upgrade, an investment in a septic system need to be made in order to improve the property in any way.
So just to be, um, just to make something clear, the, the change that's proposed from Area 3 to Area 2 is not bringing any of these parcels into the city. That would be to bring them into Area 1 through an annexation, which isn't being proposed here. John?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, for a question for Hannah. In looking at these areas, uh, that, that we're talking about right here, those areas are very poorly, uh, suited to septic systems. So that I can imagine any enlargement of any of the houses there would require an enlarged or improved septic system according to county, uh, standards and criteria. And I'm just wondering how easy it would be for somebody to obtain that sort of arrangement from the county because, uh, because the topography of that area is, is really poorly suited to septic systems.
Yeah, it's challenging. You are right. And when that is the case, we see a lot of the more evapotranspiration type systems, which kind of rely on water evaporating out rather than trickling down in, you know, through the bedrock. And, and again, those are common throughout the county. You'd be surprised at what folks can engineer in some pretty tight and mountainous places. It does have an impact on the landscape. You know, a large septic field might require some, um, earth moving and that sort of thing, retaining walls sometimes. So to some extent, having a sewer and regular water connection can be less physically impactful to, you know, to the landscape. So you might end up with a large house in a large septic system under the county. But if they were able to get, um, annexed, I don't even know that we would presume a larger house. But you reduce the impact of the septic system by providing sewer services on that option.
Another, another point that, um, that I think is, is something that we don't have any information in front of us to, to substantiate is just, we don't know whether the county, um, site plan review would allow for larger houses than the city's compatibility standards, which are based on a zoning district and the size of a lot. And, you know, the county does compat, they do their own kind of compatibility through site plan review, where they look at the size of the houses that are around the subject property in a certain radius. And then a new house being proposed cannot be larger than 125% of its area mean, unless it can show some way to, uh, you know, to overcome that presumption that 125% is the maximum size that's appropriate in that area. So if you have a lot of really big houses, you know, there are 8,000 square feet in your radius, you can go to 10,000 square feet in the county before you even bump into the presumption that you're getting too big. Whereas the city probably wouldn't allow anything close to a 10,000 square foot house in whatever low-density residential zoning district would be applied. So I just don't know whether we can really make any assumptions as to which jurisdiction would allow, you know, more obtrusive billionaire houses to get built.
I concur with that. And that's one of the reasons, you know, that the county hasn't, you know, we don't have an objection to this change in designation from Area 3 to Area 2. The city has its own regulations for ensuring compatibility, first of all. Secondarily, the city has an opportunity through the annexation process to, um, examine what development could be allowed and place limitations on it on a parcel-by-parcel basis during an annexation negotiation. What we asked to have included was the, the height limitations in our overlay zone as something that would be considered during that annexation process. So that is in the, the policies that you're considering tonight.
Any other follow-up on this particular issue? Okay, does anybody want to make more general comments before we try to speed it up potentially? Well, I'll, I'll make one, um, if, if no one else is ready to right now. So I think that, uh, you know, in general, the, the changes that we have in front of us are, uh, acceptable to me and I could vote for them. The, um, first one about the TVAP Phase 2A was one that we wanted in our May 28th planning board hearing. But when we were told that staff didn't have the resources to handle that, we put that in sort of a second subcategory of work plan items along with the, um, sub-community planning for Gun Barrel and, uh, and some other important items that we wanted council and staff to consider down the road. So I don't know how staff found the resources to put, um, TVAP back in as a map change when it wasn't going to happen, but they did. And so Jean, you want to crow a little or?
Yeah, no, I wish I could. We had anticipated this 2A, the 30th Street part moving ahead. It's the, it's the part across the railroad tracks that we didn't have the capacity to, to do that we are suggesting, um, should be examined on a future work plan.
Okay, good. All right, so then that was already there, my, my fault. Alpine Balsam is the underlying land use to facilitate the zoning changes for the, um, the plan that we spent so much time on, uh, over the last few years. Little disappointed in the Mount Hope Church not going forward based on, um, community input. Because when you look at the surrounding land use, you know, it's pretty heavily residential there. And it's, it's a really good transit location where the skip makes its turn. And, um, so it's one of the most transit, uh, friendly places. And so it's one of the most transit friendly places. And it, it is really a gateway to Boulder and could use, you know, I think, you know, it could use new zoning. Now, if the, if the notion is that people want to see a project before they'll approve a land use change, then I hope that someone proposes one someday, if that's what the property owner is interested in.
Armin?
You wanted to interrupt me, David?
I did, just since you're on that one, so we don't have to loop back to it. Do you mind if I just chime in on that?
Well, I just wanted to go through it.
We can look back, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and you can, you can talk to it, you know, in, in, and you can go through everything, just like I did, if you'd like. But yeah, so for Odell Place, you know, I, I worry a lot about the change from industrial to non-industrial zoning and non-industrial land use. And I was, Brian and I, Brian Bowen and I did a lot of the heavy lifting to create policy 2.21 in the recent comp plan update. And the, the, the thing that I think we messed up on was that we wrote that policy for light industrial. And so there are all these other districts that are service industrial and general industrial and so forth that aren't getting captured. And I think if you really want to do something great, the next time, you know, for people who are still going to be on the planning board after I'm gone, think about updating policy 2.21 to in, increase the scope of the kinds of industrial uses that are covered by it, because this would be a lot easier to shoot down. If you want to shoot down the change to 6,500 Odell, if policy 2.21 included a prohibition on changing other industrial uses and not just light industrial. So I'm just leaving a little seed and hoping that you'll plant it at some point down the road. But as it is, I think that the, the use at 6,500 Odell, which is being proposed, is compliant with the intent of that area right now. And I think staff has done the right thing in, in proposing that change. For 47th Street, it's a no brainer. It was a no brainer when we looked at it on May 28th. The, the Hillside Road is just a correction. And I think that the minor adjustments to the service area for the blue line to take them into area two makes sense. So, you know, that, that's my, that's my thought process around everything. And I'll leave it up to David to take it from there.
Sorry, I, I agree with everything you just said. The thing I wanted to add on the Greenbrier and Broadway proposal. I, I just, I think it's interesting to think about, well, what, you know, now that we're kind of sticking with an LR1 zoning, what could we see in, in alternative as kind of a by, a by right proposals that could unfold? Could we see subdivision into a few lots and a, a few fairly large expensive houses unfold there? You know, there's, there's certainly some repercussions to not being able to get past that envisioning process. So I also share your disappointment with that one. And I know that it's not clear that necessarily every subdivision and, and large home proposal would necessarily work its way through the process. But that is kind of where we sit when we have, when we leave things in a, in a load, things at a fairly major intersection, a low density residential designation. So I just wanted to add that color to what you were saying. Other than that, yeah, I agree with everything you said. And I'm, I'm happy with all the proposals in front of us in, in A through G.
Thank you, David. Does anybody else have any general comments? John?
Yeah, I, I think your comments are quite reasonable and I agree with you on the gun barrel and broad, or Greenbrier and Broadway lot there. My concern is what happens at Odell Place and how that leads us to wonder, what is the significance of an area plan if we so lightly change, change it in a significant way? That's, that's one concern I have, and I'm talking about the gun barrel area plan. And the other concern I have is with respect to loss of industrial space, which as a, someone who's been participating in the East Boulder sub-community plan efforts, that's extremely a, a great concern there. And I think it's an equally great concern in gun barrel. I'm sorry, I got a dog howling here. I'll close the door. So, so with, with respect to Odell, my, I, it's not clear to me that this is the way to go. And I, I would enjoy hearing other folks' thoughts on that.
Well, John, the reason why I, I said that I think that I can live with this one is that, you know, the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan says this area will be characterized by a mix of residential and compatible light industrial uses. And so this would provide the residential portion of what's called for in that plan. And, and it would allow for more affordable housing. And, and then as far as the, the fear about losing industrial, you know, I've been on record countless times at this point about how important the retention of diversity in this community is and sustainability and resilience through having places where people who are makers and fixers and doers can actually afford to stay. And, and that's why we wrote policy 2.21. We, damn it, we, we drafted it much too narrowly. And hopefully that'll, that'll get broadened out and, you know, you'll have some teeth to use if you want to, if you want to knock down a, a proposal like this. But I think that given the state of the law right now and the state of the code and the comp plan, this one actually works.
Well, as, as Sarah mentioned, I, I fear the death of a thousand cuts for, for our industrial land in town. So that's a concern for me.
I do too. Other thoughts? Sarah?
So given, I, I mean, I, I know there's at least four people, members of the board who have concerns about this industrial land loss while supporting the specifics that are in front of us, generally supporting them. Is there any kind of language that we could propose that might take a step to protecting the surrounding industrial land at Odell or setting aside a little bit of land at 30th and Folsom, 30th and Valmont? That could be some light industrial. I'm just wondering if we can think a little creatively about trying to save some, you know, put in some stopgap measures associated with the projects that are in front of us tonight. Or the, the, I'm sorry, the land, the designation, the land use changes proposed tonight.
Any creative thoughts, ideas? David?
I've always felt like I would feel better about this concern that we have over the light industrial if I had better data to indicate that, you know, yes, there have been, we, we have, that it outweighs the concern we have for our affordable housing goals, which are an incredibly important and very difficult hurdle for us to always deal with. And this is a, a huge project for, for making the dent in, in affordable housing opportunities. So to me, when I read the, the, the sub-community plan for, for gun barrels, a commercial district, I feel that, that it fits in because of the priority of affordable housing and the fact that there are words to support it. Now, you know, if, if we had some, maybe a, a, a study that really showed that we were in trouble in some sort of a red zone with regards to industrial, I'd feel maybe like that, that had a little more teeth. But I think we do, we do, do, we do a lot of hand wringing about the industrial stuff and I think we should be concerned about it. But I, I also don't know that I've seen a, a really compelling analysis of, of what the economic challenges are around that. And that, that doesn't mean, I'm not, I don't mean to minimize, minimize it for that, but maybe we could consider encouraging the city to, to do a study of, of, of where we're at with, with our industrial spaces. So that we, we have maybe a slightly more rigorous handle around that. So there, that's my idea.
So it's 8:21. We've been at this for two hours and 21 minutes and Peter Vitale finally put his hand up.
They're all doing really a good job tonight and I don't always feel the need to impress everybody. We get to the same point with this industrial issue every time it comes up, that we don't have the data. And furthermore, I'm concerned that if we don't address the affordable housing issue, none of these industrial users are going to be in Boulder anyway. Because the people who work at their shops already can't afford to live in Boulder and are driving in elsewhere. And for whatever reason, these great industrial tenants are still here and I'm glad they are. But I, I do know they're leaving and it is a problem. But if we don't solve the housing, the problem's going to accelerate. So picking this issue up and looking at it in a vacuum isn't going to do anyone any good. So I agree with David that, again, we need to ask for this data. We've talked about this in circles before and we're back to the same place. And we still don't have any real information or we do and we didn't, I didn't know. I mean, I don't know how we get it. I know everyone's busy. The city's busy. They're doing a great job and everything. But for us to make these decisions without that, we're just going on gut.
So I, I saw Lisa's hand up and Lupita just put hers up. Lisa?
Sorry, um, yeah, I agree with, with what I'm hearing from other folks, you know. We are sort of left in this information vacuum and then, you know, you look at an individual project and you think, okay, well, housing is really important. And BHP's done incredible work on this and this is, you know, seems like something that I should support and that I would support and that we need. But I, I don't have a sense of what it means in the overall framework, you know, and so certain things rise to the top. So, so I guess I'm just echoing that. I, I don't know what staff resource codes, resources can be put toward that. But I'd love to know, you know, who are we losing? What percentage is it accelerating? How much land? Who, how many people are they employing? If you have it, the data on where those people live and work, you know, are, are they commuting from outside the city anyway? Which I don't love, you know, but all of that would be really, really useful. Yeah, because otherwise it's just kind of like, well, seems like a good project and it's less industrial space, but it's good. So I guess we're going to vote for it, which I, I don't think is necessarily the wrong decision. But I don't feel fully informed to make that decision.
Lupita?
I have to make sure that I'm unmuted. I muted myself a while because I was wanting to say something, but I just keep listening to people. Everybody has thoughtful things to say. Yeah, so my comment has to do with both the light industrial losses that we're looking at. I think we brought it up when we discussed even a letter to council that we are aware that we need to be paying attention to this. I think it would be good for us to kind of make it a priority. I really like David's idea. I mean, that's the sort of thing that I would like to know. I always rather have data to make decisions. So I always kind of think of, you know, where are we standing? But certainly it has risen to a level that is coming up multiple times, more frequently. And so I think that we become more aware of it. I think we need to do something. If there's something that can be done this time around in some wording like Sarah sort of suggested, that'll be good. So that's with regards to light industrial zoning. But the other one was, I have been so excited about the possibility of having something really unique and exciting for the young people near Fairview and, and Southern Hills. In fact, I just recently had a discussion with one of my sons about having an In-N-Out Burger right on that corner. And I'm sure it will bring a lot of businesses and it will be the hangout place for the young people. And, you know, there are long lines and the two places that come on. So I'm just throwing that thing out there. If there is something that could have been done this time around, I was disappointed that we couldn't go straight into just zoning so that that can be happening. But if we can plan some ideas on, you know, the developers, this may be something that it will be really welcome. So yeah, I think for the most part, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the suggested changes with this couple of issues. And thank you to my work co-members for your thoughtful considerations.
Thanks, Lupita. Any other comments? General or specific? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you then, despite some of our reservations around missed opportunity on South Broadway, losses of industrial land use in our, in our comp plan land use map. Is there anybody who would vote no on the first motion for the area one property changes?
Yeah, can, does that include the, the Odell Place? Or I'm confused about which ones we're talking about right now.
It does, yeah. It's on between page two and three in the staff recommendation of your packet.
Okay.
So I would, I, I, I would support it as written, but I'm wondering if we could craft, then this may not be the proper venue at this moment, but maybe craft a friendly amendment or a motion that would encourage council to consider the kind of research on, or data gathering on industrial zone loss, job loss, etc. I'm sorry, yeah, Jean?
I was going to say, I think we're getting some of that information through the East Boulder sub-community planning process, especially around the 55th and Arapahoe Station area master planning. We're having some economic analysis done. But I, I think that given and, and knowing that the number of times we've, that this board has brought up this issue and we've talked about it, that that's some work that we're going to need to do in the context of the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. Because just hearing this conversation now, the, to be able to make recommendations in that area without that. I think that's the, a, a good place to be able to provide some of that data. And also if we are, when, when and if we are pursuing the, the rest of Phase 2 for Transit Village area plan, one of the criteria on that was to, to have some market analysis and some absorption types of data with that effort.
So can I just, can I just follow up with Jean? Armin, do you mind?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Jean, are you? Are you, so I really appreciate that the East Boulder Sub-Community Planning Process is going to reveal some of that data. But it, it's not taking a citywide look, is that correct?
I don't think all of it's complete yet, so I'm, and I'm going to probably look to Charles because I, I don't want to promise, I don't want to promise analysis we don't have funding for. But we have talked about the need to, to make sure that we have a good understanding of some of those market forces for that sub-community planning process. And it would likely need to reflect what's, you know, how, how does, how does the industrial fit into the wider context of this, of city uses?
So, so Charles, it, is Jean talking about something that would be a city, would cover citywide industrial?
No, that's, that's not my understanding. I think the work in the East Boulder Sub-Community is really limited to that, you know, discrete universe as far as industrial lands go. And Jean's right, I took a look at the TVAP plan over the, the break and everything that's east of the railroad tracks, all of it in Phase 2 of TVAP. TVAP is light industrial right now. And before we did any planning out there, that's, that was one of the things that was predicated in the plan was that we would do some market analysis about service industrial and light industrial uses out in the Phase 2 of TVAP. But like I did say earlier, it does preserve quite a large swath of industrial on the future land use map. So I know those considerations were made when we were talking about loss of service industrial and general industrial properties in, in the TVAP planning process.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things, Sarah, you know, you, you suggested, is there some way that we could try to preserve our industrial now? So one of the things, Sarah, you know, you you suggested, is there some way that we could try to preserve our industrial now? And and I said, well, you know, we messed up by only calling out light industrial in the comp plan. Maybe you can fix that later. One of the things, now that it occurs to me as I listen to you, that we might think of doing is in our third motion where we're talking about text and policy changes, we could, we could suggest taking the word "light" out of Policy 2.21 right now. And, you know, while the comp plan amendment tends to be a pretty big project with a lot of public outreach, and you don't lightly mess around with policies in a midterm update. And I'd really like to just rewrite the whole policy to make it clear that what we're trying to do is preserve our industrial space in the city of Boulder for all the reasons of resilience and and sustainability that I've talked about. We may be able to push through a more, you know, modest proposal, which leaves all the language intact for now. And sure, you can, you know, I'll leave it up to you to beef it up at the next update, major update, where you'll probably still be around for that. But if we took out the word "light" from the title, and then where it says the city supports its light industrial areas, just take that word "light" out as well, and just say the city supports its industrial areas, you know? That could be a change that would gain a little bit of traction. So, you know, I think we could, if people are interested in that, maybe in the third motion, we we might add that change.
I think that's really interesting, and when we get there, maybe we could come back and talk it over with the policy staff and and Hella to find out if what kind of policy analysis has to be done for such a proposal, if and if any policy analysis has to be done, like what the implications might be. But I like the idea very much. As long as staff thinks some, we aren't like starting some ball rolling down the hill that hasn't been fully analyzed.
Okay, so I asked for a negative poll. I think at this point, I'm just gonna ask for a motion. Can you put the motions back up, Jean? Is there anybody who wants to make the the motion while I can see all your faces? John?
I would, I would love to have Odell Place separated out from the rest of these. My, my concern is twofold. One is that I, I don't, I intend to support everything else except that. And I'd like to be able to do that. And the other is that it seems to me that we we have not really considered what we're doing with respect to the area plan and gun barrel in a suitable manner.
Okay, well, I'd be amenable to that. So if if folk, if if other people agree and there's a motion maker, then the suggestion would be to make a motion where it says in attachments A through G, your motion would be in attachments A through C and E through G. So you would be accepting D, and for one D, we would have a separate vote on that. David?
Yeah, I'd make such a motion if you're ready for it.
Make it.
Motion to approve land use map and planning area map changes to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan as shown and described in the staff memo and in attachments A through C and E through G.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from David Ensign, and it's been seconded by John Gerstle. Is there any discussion to this motion? And just speak, because I I can't see everybody. Okay, hearing, hearing none. Oh, now I can see all of you. I just spread my screen out a little for the the side that has the people in it. So then I'm gonna repeat that and make it the motion of the board. The Planning Board moves to approve the land use map and planning areas map changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in the staff memo and in attachments A through C and E through G. All in, well, no, I'm gonna do a a roll call vote. David Ensign?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
Peter Vitale?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
John Gerstle?
Aye.
And I I vote aye. So the first motion passes unanimously. Now, I'm I'm gonna make the second motion. It's just the same language. So, motion to approve the land use map and planning areas map changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in the staff memo and in attachment D. Can I get a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, David seconds. So we got a motion by Zuckerman, seconded by Ensign. Any discussion to this motion? Okay, then I'm gonna call a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. So the motion passes. It's six to one, Gerstle against. Okay, now we have a second item that we're gonna talk about, which is this for Area Two and Three properties requiring four-body review. So Jean, can you put the screen down for now? So this, we'll do it the same way. Is there anyone who would like to make any general comments about these, these two, H and I? And John, I understand that you have a limitation here. So you don't have to speak to, I believe it was H four. I'll look at the list of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Zero Linden. So John won't be, we'll break this motion into two. And and then we'll do a vote on Zero Linden without John. Any general comments about these properties and and the changes proposed for them? David?
Yeah, I I support this section almost completely. I I did want to raise the issue that I'm really not, I'm sure I understand what sort of public outreach was done in the use of the Hogan-Pankos property. That property was acquired by the city of Boulder because of public outcry over the potential for residential development. And now we're looking at designated, designating it open space acquired, which is basically a a permanent designation. Once you do that, no one will ever, ever allow anything to go on there. We could have designated it public and made it something that we could have potentially put some other kind of a public accommodation on. But when we make it open space acquired, this property that was actually not identified by Open Space Department as being open space important or significant is now being designated that way. And I wondered if we've thought about that very much. I I find that a little, little odd. Anybody have a comment?
Lisa, are you gonna say something? No?
Jean, did you want to say anything about that? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, I I don't. I think that the Charles may know some of the history on that, too, because I don't think it's, we just worked with our open space colleagues and the identification of what the recommended land use changes were for those. I I don't have depth on the, on where those boundaries were and and why.
And it wasn't necessarily taken to the public for discussion, as far as I know, right? It was just sort of something that kind of fell through, you know, the processes. Okay.
These were taken through the Open Space Board of Trustees, the recommendations.
And and the Open Space Board, I'm led to believe, then Jean supported the change to open space acquired?
That's correct. And I believe in the purchase of the properties, some open space funds were used.
Ah.
With that, come some restrictions under the charter automatically.
That's interesting. Thank you. Okay, Hella, thanks for that information. Very important. Okay. So no, no other comments about about this H and I? Okay, so then I guess the the suggestion that I would make to the motion maker is that you make the motion with the recommended language. Except where you're gonna accept out item H four from your motion to approve this second motion, and then we'll have a separate vote on that. Can I get a motion maker? And can you put the motions up, Jean, please?
I'll make a motion, but I can't do it till I see the.
I don't expect that you memorized it. We'll wait until the screen changes.
I can't remember what I had for lunch, for dinner, which I literally had five minutes ago, so.
Well, the motions in the packet were enormous, so I'm so glad they were streamlined.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the land use map and planning area, areas map changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in the staff memo and in attachments H and I, accepting attachment HA. H four, excuse me.
Yeah. Can I get a second for Sarah's motion? Lupita, and is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, then I'll make it the motion of the board. Planning Board moves to approve the land use map and planning areas changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in the staff memo memo and in attachments H and I exclusive of H four. Do a roll call vote. David Ensign?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So that motion is approved seven to nothing. Now, John, if you can click off your screen and your mic, we'll exclude you from this next motion. So this would just be a motion to approve attachment, the, the, everything that it's written, except you'll say attachment H four. Okay, do I have a motion maker now?
Sure.
David?
Motion to approve the land use map and planning areas map changes to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan as shown and described in the staff memorandum and in attachment H four. Is that right, H four?
You got it. Second? Sarah seconded it. So I have a motion from Ensign, seconded by Silver, and is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, then I'll make it the motion of the board. Planning Board moves to approve the land use map and planning areas map changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in the staff memo and in attachment H four. David Ensign?
Aye.
Aye. Lisa Smith?
Sorry, I'm meeting. Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So that motion passes six to nothing with John Gerstle recused. All right, so the next discussion's gonna be about the policy and text changes. Jean, if you can pull the screen down, please.
Need to get John back.
And let's get John back. John's back. All right, great. So I'll do it the same way as the other ones. We're talking about the text changes that are in attachment J. Is there any, are there any general comments around that?
Would this be a a good opportunity to bring up your idea, Harmon, of slightly a proposing, recommending a slight revision to 2.21?
Sure.
I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, and I think we would just do that if we did that by just adding that, you know, the the steps recommended motion. And then additionally, a minor text change to Policy 2.21 to remove the word "light" where it appears in front of industrial.
So the only thing I would ask is, Charles, if you, what your feedback on making a change like that is?
In in what regard?
Well, do you have any concerns that even though it seems like a minor rhetorical change, it might have implications that we that we need to think about?
Yeah, I mean, I think we would probably have to study it if it was something that, you know, grew legs. I think we would probably want to take a look at what that meant as far as unintended consequences, but I wouldn't go off the top of my head, though.
And I think by by grow legs, Charles, you mean city council would.
Yeah, council takes interest in it and directs staff to, you know, to make that change, then we would have to do some analysis around that.
Right. Lupita?
Yeah, but just to make sure, this is just for that one policy 2.2, right? So it's not for the one. So it would be very confined.
Right. Yes, Lupita, it is just confined to Policy 2.21.
And we could frame it as a recommendation to consider making such a language change?
So then we would, if that's the case, then we would have to loop back.
You'd loop back.
We have to go back and 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 vote again.
If we made the change, then council could either support it or not. And and if they didn't, then it would die. If if we recommended to council that they consider it, and then they considered it and said, yeah, that's good, then they would come back to us for final approval.
So it just seems to me, since we don't know the, there hasn't been an analysis of such a change, that a recommendation for consideration is a better way to go. I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm trying to be cognizant. I mean, I realize that staff's plate is full. But I also wouldn't want us to make it, to propose a change that council, given how complex this particular piece of docket or docket content is, would not recognize this to be a change that could have possibly considerable, considerable impact. I'm just trying to this, you know, we, us removing one word from 2.21 might slip right under the radar for a city council when they're looking at this hundred and twelve-page document as one document in a seven-document city council hearing. So that's what I'm just trying to be careful about.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen. You know, if if staff's gonna put the the staff report in front of them, and because this is a two-body review, this is something that if if Planning Board starts the ball rolling on a new policy, then it's incumbent upon council to either support that or don't support that. Two other pieces in favor of doing this now are, you know, it, it isn't, I I would bet a lot that this is not a policy that was quantitatively studied the first time around. I don't think that it needs to be quantitatively studied the second time around. The second piece is that the policy goes on to talk about different kinds of industrial and goes on to talk about preservation of our industrial uses. So I think that the intent of the policy is to preserve industrial in Boulder, not just light industrial. And it's been, it's been largely, you know, thought of as a light industrial preservation policy because of its title and because of that first sentence. But if you read deeper into it, it it encompasses many other forms of industry and not just light industrial. So, you know, I would, I would be willing to take a crack at just doing it. And if council doesn't like it, they don't have to, but it gets it on the record. And if, you know, if if two years from now, when we're doing the, you know, you guys will be doing the next update, you want to change the policy more thoroughly to make it clear that, you know, we want industrial land to be preserved in Boulder at affordable rates so that we have a resilient community that can respond to crises in a timely fashion and with, you know, with power. You know, then that's what I was hoping the the policy would really say. So I'm not asking to make that change now.
Well, then I'm, I personally would be comfortable adding a sentence or, you know, something to the motion that addresses that. But I I'm sure other people have thoughts as well.
Yeah, that helps, that helps clarify, Harmon. So thanks.
David?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about how much this really would help me in in a, in a, in actually making decisions like we made tonight. The removal of the word "light" doesn't actually do that much for me. And I I guess maybe other people might have a different idea about that, but it it doesn't. Because I don't feel like we have a whole lot of heavy industry in Boulder. And if I look at TBAP 2A and and the Odell, both of those are
Both of those are very light industrial. Removing light doesn't change anything. I actually wrote a potential separate motion that people might want to consider something like. Several of the proposed changes positively of these proposed changes positively address the jobs, housing imbalance. And affordability, however, they may have the side effect of reducing the development opportunity for industrial uses. Planning Board recommends that the city prioritize the study of trends in citywide industrial zoning inventory, potentially in conjunction with East Boulder Sub Community Plan. To ensure that we can better understand the ramifications of such land use changes. So I thought that that would actually. Reject that we are concerned and that we don't feel like we have enough data. But but it does, of course, create work potentially if we can't do it all under the East Boulder Sub Community Plan, so that's the way I was thinking. But if it makes people feel better to remove light, we, you know, I have no real problem with that, it's just, I just don't know what it'll help with.
I would, I would come back, David, by saying that when we've had, like tonight, we have mixed use industrial service industrial, if we. If we look back, we've had, we've had general industrial and other land uses that have been changed. Or zone districts that have been been changed in our time. And because they weren't specifically LI. They they got through. And so, you know, it's been the interpretation. Of staff in this board up to this point that if it isn't specifically changing light industrial, if it's any other. Letter other than L in front of the I, then it's fair game. And I think that, you know, we're telegraphing that, you know, we want to preserve all kinds of industrial by removing the light.
Couldn't we do both, we could do both, remove the light and also David's proposal, which is more about data, data gathering and analysis. And they're not mutually exclusive, in fact, they might be mutually mutually reinforcing.
Yeah, I think that's true.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I, I would support that.
Me too.
Okay, so. Are there any general, other general comments about this third group? Alright, well, David, why don't we? Why don't we do a negative poll, does everybody? Is there anybody who wouldn't vote yea? On a vote to approve this third group. Of policy and text changes specifically. With the change to policy two point two one and the further recommendation that Dave read.
There were multiple negatives in there, I would support all of those things, sorry.
Okay, so, so David, if you want to make the motion, because you did the heavy lifting. I would just suggest that. That when you make the motion, you you say. That additionally. We want. We are. Approving a text change or a policy change to policy two point two one to remove the word light where it appears before industrial.
Alright. Okay. If we can display the the. Text of the recommended amendments, I will, should be able to do that.
And David, further, I could even suggest saying something like, you know. In order to. More more effectively preserve. Boulder's industrial land use. To. Further, you know, to preserve Boulder's ability to be resilient and for other reasons. Planning Board approves the following policy change and and then. You know, if you want to give a preamble for a reason for it, that's, that's fine, too, I'm not trying to make the motion, but however you want to do it. And the reason why I say that is because it's gonna go to council like that and they might want to know why.
Okay. Um, Jean, are you able to display the motions and then I'll. Let's see if I didn't type in that part, but I'll do my best.
Great.
With a preamble. Okay. Motion to approve the policy and text changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in. Attachment J. In addition, Planning Board recommends that to. To further preserve the. Industrial zones in in that section two dot two one. Remove the word light before the word industrial. Does that make sense? That's the one I was a little bit on.
Maybe I'll, I'll draft a little something while you talk, Dave.
Yeah. And that Planning Board recommend recognizes that several of the proposed. Changes, actually, I wonder if the the one with the study should maybe be a separate motion since that refers to one, two and three. Because that refers to Odell and. That that one's a little bit more disconnected from just the the wording, the wording changes.
Okay, yeah, I think we could do it that way.
You can make that one a different one and you can make this motion.
Okay.
Yeah, because you, I think you have a better handle on the wording around two dot two one and that was kind of your idea. Do you mind if I punt that over to you?
Yeah, and then you can just make a whole separate motion as a recommendation for the study. Give me a second, I'm gonna type this out.
And Cindy, I'll go ahead and send my text to you while we're doing this.
David?
Yes.
So you texted it to me, is this?
This will be the, not the one Harmon's gonna make, but the motion that I'll make after that.
Oh.
I can email it if it's easier.
Could you email it that I can just? It's long.
It's the whole motion.
It's a book.
Alright, Cindy, it's coming your way. Thanks for waiting, everyone.
This doesn't look like a book and emailed, it just looks like a book and text.
Okay, do Cindy, do, should we shift to Cindy sharing?
That's fine, I'll need the the motion language in three.
Okay, I can, I can keep for now.
Okay.
So is Harmon, yours is the first part?
Right, so. So what I'll do.
I haven't got yours yet, Harmon, did you send it?
I did, and I can just read it. And Planning Board can listen to it and if we want a wordsmith, that you can put it up on the screen. So, so I'm gonna start. Motion to approve the policy and text changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in attachment J. In addition to preserve Boulder's industrial land use and industrial areas. For the sake of the city's diversity, sustainability and resilience as a community. Planning Board approves a policy change whereby the word light is deleted in policy two point two one. Where it appears before the word industrial. Can I get a second and then we can discuss it? Peter? Was that a second for you, I saw your hand up first?
That was a second.
Okay. Any discussion around that?
If I could, if I can just ask, if folks could help, help me to be able to articulate this to council as to the. What you would like to achieve by the, like, I know we've been talking, talking about this, but to help rearticulate that again.
Yeah, that would be helpful, Harmon, in us transmitting this to council, because I apologize, I missed the initial discussion of a part of two point two one, so. We want to make sure the intent is clear.
So first of all, it would just be displayed with strike through the word light in the title, so it would be policy two point two one industrial. And then. The city supports its strike through light industrial areas. That's it, two strike throughs of the word light and. And everything else stays the same. And the concept is that, you know, we're seeing conversion of industrial property. To other uses and. Planning Board has voiced its its concern about that over the years. That when we lose these industrial uses, we end up having to drive to Longmont to get a tire changed. We can't find a vacuum cleaner repair person in the city. And I think more importantly, we lose the kinds of jobs. That are populated by people who make things and fix things and aren't just eggheads or trust funders or. You know, university students, you know, these are people who are useful contributors to the community. Who understand the industrial arts, who can build a house. And and I don't want to live in a community which doesn't include people like that. And so. We're not trying to wholesale rewrite two point two one, we just want to beef it up a little because we've seen. That we've lost some industrial property because it wasn't LI. You know, it was some other I. And so we just, we want to make it clear that this policy supports the continuation of all industrial uses.
Excellent, a really helpful explanation, I apologize, I missed the initial.
Don't apologize, and I think. It's good that, you know, you're making me articulate it, Charles, I appreciate that. And there are other planning board members who want to chime in, I saw Lupita's hand up a minute ago and David's hand came up. Lupita?
Yes, I almost made this comment earlier because the way I interpreted where we were going is really. To clarify that our concern is for all industrial changes, so to me, going. More general by eliminated the the descriptive, you know, the adjective, light. We're wanting to just come on, go on record that our concern involves all of the industrial uses of land and the city. Which I think, you know, you you gave very good examples, you know, that goes from light to much, you know, heavier. So I thought to me, it was more of making these as a general concern, it's not just one type of industrial uses, it's all of it. Because we're seeing that happening. I should have said this earlier because to me, I interpret what you said early on, I said, yeah, it makes total sense to me and it going more general makes this makes sense.
Great, thank you, David?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I hate to throw a wrench in this, but I I get a little nervous about. I don't, I don't want this to be seen as like a poison pill where, by where, by which we can. If we have a on balance, something that is really going to do a lot for, say, affordable housing or or something that we. We're seeing this as a way to to kind of cool those, that's a very high thing on our priority list, so. Maybe that isn't what we're trying to do here, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not. You know, I'm looking at the two, I, the two things that we talked about today, both T VAP two C. Two A and Odell, I support. Regardless of language that we might, and I just want to, I don't want to give the impression that we're adding this to prevent more Odels or more two As. I think we, there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of things that we have to weigh. But philosophically, I don't really have a problem with it, so as long as as I'm not missing something there, yeah, I'll, I'll vote for it.
So I'll, I'll just speak just David in response, my thoughts were not at all about creating a poison pill, but rather. In recognition that a lot of what we is coming down the pipe is. This chipping away at industrial areas and wanting to make sure that all industrial areas are part of the. Part of discussion as we try to balance all of these competing needs, that's how I perceive it.
I think that's fair, okay, thank you.
If I, if I may add something to that, too, because to me, that's how I saw it, I think just when I make sure that we look at industrial in. In the totality, but when we made decisions, we're doing it or not case by case. And you really, what matters is how you vote, so. We just have the language to make it, remind us all that we are concerned about this. But when we have to look at a project and there's affordable housing in there and there's something to do with industrial uses. Then we will tell which one is more important to us by the way that we vote.
And and I'll just add on to that, that. I'm definitely not opposed to affordable housing and a lot of the plans that are moving forward in any way. But at the same time. Whenever we're reallocating land uses, I just like to understand how does that fit into the total context, you know, what are we gaining, what are we losing? How much of that are we gaining or losing, what's been happening over the last 10 years, what everything is gonna happen in the next 10, 30 years? Yeah, because I worry that we'll turn around one day and say, oh. All those businesses that used to be right here in town are are gone. And and if that's something that ends up happening, then. But maybe that's okay, but I think we need to understand that we're doing that as we go along and I just feel like I lack the context necessarily know what's happening.
And and just to, you know, make sure that we're not. We're not creating a poison pill for motion three. Which I suppose is motion five now because we broke out one and two to two motions each. Just want to confirm, Kela, that by. Putting a period after described in attachment J. And then saying in addition to preserve Boulder's industrial land use and so forth. That we leave council with the option to approve both halves of the motion. Or just the first half of the motion without necessarily killing the first half if they don't like the second.
Yeah, I think you'll be fine, really what you're approving is is different. Policy changes. So you're just creating an additional one and and they'll consider each of the different policy changes and if they're not gonna approve. This last one that you're creating, then then it won't pass and it won't, the amendment won't pass, I guess.
But they'll, but they can still be and they can still pass the first piece of the motion that goes from. The beginning of read to the letter J. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Important how the, how many motions it's split up into.
Okay.
Change will be considered separately.
Great.
Or or together and they they can bunch it the way they want, just like you did today.
Okay, great, alright, so is there any more discussion?
Harmon? I still haven't gotten your email.
That's weird. Shows is being sent.
Didn't that happen in one former meeting, you sent it from a different email address and that worked?
Yeah. So Cindy, I'll get it to you after the meeting, but we're not gonna put this one up on the screen, so don't worry about it for now, is that okay?
Yeah. I just, I'm out tomorrow, so I just would like to.
Okay, I'll get it.
Why don't you text it to me and I'll say, I'll email it to Cindy since my email worked.
Okay, great. But now, exactly, let's, let's just end discussion if there's no more discussion, and then I'll repeat the motion as the motion of the board, and take a vote. Okay? Planning Board moves to approve the policy and text changes to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as shown and described in Attachment J. In addition, to preserve Boulder's industrial land use and industrial areas for the sake of the city's diversity, sustainability, and resilience as a community, Planning Board approves a policy change whereby the word "light" is deleted in Policy 2.21, where it appears before the word "industrial." Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, then Lisa seconds, we have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, we had a second. Who seconded the first time around?
Peter.
Okay, sorry about that. So, so that's already the motion of the board. And let's do a poll now. So David?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye, but what happened to David's, David's piece?
It's gonna go next.
Got it.
Mr. Gird, thank you, and I vote aye, so that motion passes unanimously. David?
All right, Cindy, are you able to display the text I sent you? So I will read the text here. Planning Board recognizes that several of the proposed midterm BVCP changes positively address the jobs, housing imbalance, and affordability, however they may have the side effect of reducing the development opportunity for industrial uses. Planning Board recommends that the city prioritize a study of trends in citywide industrial use zoning inventory, potentially in conjunction with East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, to assure that we can better understand the ramifications of land use changes. I don't know if we need to add.
Can you see my screen?
Sort of.
Can you see my screen?
Well, it says on a motion by H. Suckman, second by Peter Vitale first, but then it says, get, get rid of everything, well, everything before Planning Board, just the fir, in the first line there, after seven dash zero, that. That's all.
Well, this, this will be the motion part, this is for the motion.
Beyond that is.
This is what you sent me.
Okay, great.
So, yeah. I'm just waiting for the motion, so, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I just read.
Do I need to make it bigger?
I would just add one word, David, what do you, before land use changes, I would add the word "such land use changes", because I think we're referring specifically to industrial land, the land use changes in industrial areas, aren't we, are we not?
Sure, yeah.
Right here at the end?
Yes.
Such?
Yeah. David, can I ask another question? I'm presuming that when you think about, well, I'll say, when I think about a study like this, I think it's helpful to imagine going back a few years, so that you have a trend, you have a trend line, not what starts today, but looking back as well as looking forward, is, are you thinking sort of along those same lines?
Um. Yeah, when I said citywide, I kind of thought, you know, all the, all the fact, you know, we were just kind of trying to capture all the factors that would go into whether we are adequately creating space for the industrial uses. I don't know, do you have a place where we might add the word?
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, it wasn't about adding word, I just wanted to, because, you know, as we've talked about before, you know, there's a lot of development, TVAP is, was all previously industrial. So, it'd be interesting to look, starting maybe 10 years ago, what happened to the businesses that were in TVAP, in TVAP, as well as what, where does work look like it's going in the future, and that's sort of, I just wanted to understand if you, you were sort of thinking in that same sort of broad kind of piece of research.
We could put recent and future before trends. A study, a study of recent and future trends in citywide industrial zoning inventory.
Sure, that'd be great.
And Dave, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into the works completely, but I just wanted to note that in looking back on where we are in the East Boulder Sub-Community Planning Process, we completed the existing conditions phase last year. So you may want to decouple it from the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, because at this point, we're working toward a preferred scenario. That's, I think, you know, in the coming year, really what, you know, we've compiled the data and looked at all the existing conditions in the past year, so we're kind of at a, the latter phase of the project, so you, for what that's worth.
How about potentially informed by? So it says that we're, we're just gonna, you know, they could use stuff already done by the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan.
Sure. Just wanted to make that clear, that we've, we've moved past the existing conditions.
Yeah, because I, I do, we definitely don't want to be adding work to the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, but somebody pointed out that some of that had been done. So how about if we say potentially informed by? Is that, that kind of makes, makes it clear that we're not trying to mess with those folks by doing things necessarily in conjunction with them.
As long as we're fiddling with words here, can we add, say, status and trends?
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I hope we're not creating, I mean, this is a bad year to be adding stuff to the work plan, but I just, I know that we've been asking this question a lot over the last two years, so I, I, I think it's a good thing to at least raise. I, yeah. So I'll put this forward as a motion if people want to, any other wording, things, anybody?
So, David, we don't have a second yet, right? We were just kind of working together to.
Yeah.
Okay, so David's motion's on the screen. Can I get a second for his motion?
I'll second.
I, I saw Sarah's hand first, so seconded by Silver. Okay, and I'm gonna ask if there's any more discussion at all. Okay, I'm gonna make it the, the motion of the board, and then we'll vote. On a motion by David Ensign, seconded by, sorry. Planning Board recognizes that several of the proposed midterm BVCP changes positively address the jobs, housing imbalance, and affordability. However, they may have the side effect of reducing the development opportunity for industrial uses. Planning Board recommends that the city prioritize a study of recent and future status and trends in citywide industrial zoning inventory, potentially informed by the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, to assure that we can better understand the ramifications of such land use changes. And I'll call for a roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Pita?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, so that motion is approved by a seven, nothing margin. Okay, so we're about to go to our next matter, thank you, that was, that was a lot, and and yet it wasn't a lot, because Gene made it so easy, and staff did such a great. That's a, you know, it's a lot of work to make any kind of comprehensive plan changes in any community, particularly in Boulder. And so I really want to give a shout out to Gene and all of the city staff for doing a terrific job, and, and thanks Hannah for coming along and, and for all the things that you do in the county, because we're working together on this. So, great work, everybody, and I don't want to take a break right now, I want to keep moving. So, the next item on the agenda is this is an update, I'm sorry, wait a minute, where am I?
Design, construction.
Yeah, we're moving to, no, there's a South Boulder Creek upstream analysis update.
Oh, boy.
And so I think we've got some staff here with some engineering chops that are going to walk us through this, Joe?
Yeah, so.
I'll turn it over to Charles to introduce this matter, Charles.
Thanks, Harmon, Joe Taduyuki, the city's utilities director, is gonna present this item tonight to, to the board.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening to the Planning Board members, I'm Joe Taduyuki, Director of Utilities, and I'm here with Brandon Coleman, who's the Utilities Engineering Project Manager for the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project, and we wanted to provide the Planning Board a brief update on the flood project. We were last here in May, and a lot of processes has occurred since then. And specifically, as the title indicates tonight, we're gonna talk about upstream alternatives. So I will give a quick overview of our process and how we got here, and then Brandon will hit the highlights of the technical work with a few visuals, and I promise this won't be as long as the, as the last item in the heavy lifting you just did, will be pretty quick. So, there were two key process steps in 2020 that are guiding our discussion tonight. The first was an open space board of trustees meeting that took place on June 3rd. And they made a recommendation to city council when they were considering the design work around the variant 1, 100 year flood project, and they asked for an analysis.
Joe, Joe, can I just interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
It slipped my mind, but this is, this is really not as, it's as much about CU South as it is about engineering, and there are a few members of Planning Board who need to recuse themselves from this discussion. So, I'm gonna recuse myself. I believe Lisa and Lupita are too, and Lisa, I'll leave it to you to say what you need to say, if you need to say anything, or just that you're recusing yourself.
I will recuse myself as well.
Me too, I had already turned off my, my camera.
Okay, and I believe that we will get text messages from, from Cindy when it's time for us to come back for Lupita, Lisa, and I. Thank you, sorry.
I'm gonna text you Lupita, since I have you.
Sorry, Joe, for the interruption, I, I let it slip.
No problem at all. So, as I was saying, we had an open space board meeting on June 3rd, they made a recommendation to city council asking for an analysis of an upstream concept with flood detention facilities or a storage reservoir placed entirely on CU South property. And the idea was to see if we could take advantage of a flow split that occurs in the flood plain and capture enough water to prevent the US 36 from overtopping and, and flooding downstream neighborhoods as happened in 2013. And the, the appeal of that concept was that it could conceivably have less environmental impact and impacts on open space. The second process step occurred within a few weeks of the open space meeting, and that was a visit to city council on June 16th, and, and they took action on the project, and they recommended kind of two parallel paths. They recommended that we continue working on the variant 1, 100 design and proceeding, proceeding with the design and permitting, and that that, in their mind, was the basis for design of, of the project. But they also wanted us to, to go back and, and work with the open space board and revisit the upstream concept and do a comparison to the, to the variant 1, 100 year flood. And, and they asked us to compare it on the basis of cost, environmental impacts, and, and flood effectiveness. And so as a staff team, since mid-June, we've been working from both sets of direction, both the June 3rd open space motion and June 16th council. And the way we went about that and, and kind of developed a process was through a process subcommittee. And the two council members, Mayor Weaver and Council Member Friend, are the, are the council appointees to the South Boulder Creek Flood Process Subcommittee. And in, in discussions in that group, we formed an upstream advisory group that consisted of two board members from each of the Planning Board, RAB, Open Space Board of Trustees, plus the two council members on the process subcommittee. And by the way, I would like to thank John Gersel and David Ensign as the Planning Board representatives. We spent a fair amount of time going through a lot of detail on the project and appreciate the, the efforts and participation. So with that advisory group, we had three meetings, and we really went deep into the technical details of the flood modeling and, and kind of how the, the floods develop on the flood plane. And the purpose of that was to inform our process and try to get consensus around a, a path forward and getting buy-in on the project. And there were, there were three meetings, as I said, those are all recorded for people who might be interested. The, I believe there are links to them on the South Boulder Creek Flood webpage. And so, we went through a lot of that, Brandon will talk about the highlights in a minute. And through the process subcommittee, the, the process that was determined going forward, and in part why we're here tonight, they, it was determined that we do a public hearing and have a really detailed discussion of the work with the Open Space Board of Trustees. We developed a two-meeting process with them, we've had the first one in November, we've got another one coming up in December here. And because it was really their interest in the, in the upstream that, that drove the work, but also wanted to keep the other boards in the loop, and so we've, we also were tasked with doing brief matters updates to the Water Resources Advisory Board and the, and the Planning Board. And so, we, a month or so ago, we checked in with, with RAB, and so tonight, we're here with Planning Board. And I was gonna turn it over to Brandon to show a few visuals, but John and David, I was wondering if there was anything you wanted to add about anything I said about process or the advisory group, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, you, you might want to think about that as we continue here, if you'd like.
Well, John, you want to start, or shall I?
No, I, Joe, I think you, you gave a good introduction, so eager to hear what Brandon has to say.
Sure. Yeah, and I'll just add my thanks to Joe and Brandon, I, I think you'll be really impressed with, with the amount of work that's been done, I think it's, it, it was really a very productive process of kind of looking at, at the, at all of the variables of, of what an upstream option might, might be. And so I think, open space, I know they spent over five hours on it in their first half of their public hearing, and so I just, I'll just give a shout out to the members of the Open Space Board of Trustees for the amount of work they're putting into this, so, yeah, go ahead.
So, Brandon, go ahead, I think you've got a couple of visuals that you want to share with the flood modeling and some, some concept.
Yeah, great.
Well, thanks to the board for letting us come and give you guys an update tonight. I'm Brandon Coleman, I'm a Engineering Project Manager with Stormwater Flood Utility. So, like Joe mentioned, we've been working on this upstream alternative, really to compare it and to the variant 1, and really in the context of looking at, could this potentially have a significant reduction in impacts to the existing open space property that surrounds the CU South property? So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and let's see if I can do this here. And while this is pulling up. I don't need any advanced sharing options. So what I'm going to show and what we found throughout the advisory group process and also the meeting with OSPT was really that there's been a lot of questions about the flood and what's actually happening in South Boulder Creek and how that could impact a potential flood mitigation design. So what we did was we took the modeling software, which is called Mike Flood, and it's a combination 1D, 2D hydraulic modeling software, which really models kind of the existing flood plain in South Boulder Creek watershed. And we created some videos and visuals. And throughout that process, I think it really kind of steps through how a potential flood mitigation strategy would develop around this. So I we have these videos. They've been posted to the project website. I've been using them in a lot of presentations. And they're not very long. They're only one minute. But what I'll do is, as I walk through it, I typically stop it at a few key points during the flood. And I'll talk about each of those key points and also how they would relate to a potential flood mitigation design. So. And can everybody see that? Okay. Okay, great. So this is just a map of the CU South property in South Boulder Creek in the vicinity of State Highway 93 and US 36. So if you look at the top of this map, that major roadway that's cutting across, that's US 36. And then at the very bottom of the screen, you'll see another roadway, that's State Highway 93, just to give some context of where we're at. And that big bulge, there's a blue line there. That's Dry Creek Ditch number two, but that's essentially the CU South property there. So just to give everybody a little bit of context, and I'll point things out as the video plays. Let me just get it to play here. So what this is showing is it's showing depth, and there's also arrows that are showing flow vectors. And the vectors are really what those vectors are showing is a direction and magnitude of flow during the flood event. So I'm going to stop it here. So you'll see on the screen, this is time step 25 in the model. And every time step in this model is five minutes. So this will be at about 125 minutes into our design flood event. And the key thing to point out here is right where South Boulder Creek and US 36 intersect. So you'll see that we have this blue line. That's representing South Boulder Creek. But at that point in the modeling, you'll see there's a finger that's kind of splitting off from South Boulder Creek. And so what that means is South Boulder Creek is actually leaving its channel. And ultimately, this flow that's leaving South Boulder Creek is what's contributing to the West Valley overflow flooding that we're trying to mitigate as part of this project. So I'll play it just a little bit further here. So now we're at time step 30. So we're not very much further in the flood. But you'll see that finger of flow that's left to South Boulder Creek banks is growing. So there's continuing to be flow in South Boulder Creek, and it's running along US 36. But at the very bottom of the screen, you'll see where State Highway 93 is. You'll start to see there's a flow that's split off of South Boulder Creek, upstream of the CU South property and overtopped State Highway 93. And so the way OSPT has been asking us to look at this project is really, what does that split flow mean? And can we capture all of that split flow? And would that meet the flood mitigation goals of the project? So I'll just go ahead and play through here. And so that's the split flow there. And if you can see my curse to that State Highway 93. And then I'll stop it. And you'll see that flow as the flood progresses is a pretty significant flow. So if you're just looking at this just from a mapping perspective or just from an area basis, South Boulder Creek has continued to convey water essentially downstream, and that continues on top at US 36. So you'll see that flow continue to grow. But the State Highway 93 flow is pretty significant and substantial. So there's been a lot of interest in, well, is that enough flow? If we can just capture that flow, does that meet the flood mitigation goals of the project? So I'll go ahead and play it a little bit further. And I just want to stop stop it right about here. So you'll see in the existing conditions that State Highway 93 flow actually hits an existing levee that goes around the CU South property, and it's actually conveyed closer to South Boulder Creek. And that flow ultimately joins up with the overflow from South Boulder Creek. And that's running along US 36, overtopping US 36, and then contributing to the West Valley overflow flooding there. So this is really the peak flow. It should be at time step 55. Yes, very close to there. So about 275 minutes into the flood, that's when we see the peak flow. And I'm going to go ahead and just let this play out from here. But really, that's kind of the context of what we are looking at for flood mitigation design. So I know that's a very, for me, this is all very exciting work. You know, it's a and it's a very good way. I find this is a good way to kind of explain a very complicated process that's going on, so people can kind of understand what's being requested of us and what's going on. So as you can see, the flood kind of dies down as it progresses through, and then it kind of wraps up here. So I'm just going to exit out of this one. And let's see, I should be able to exit. Just have to give me one minute here. Ready to go. There it is. Okay. So we also did another model run for the advisory group, and I won't spend as much time on this model run. But I will stop it kind of at those key moments again. So really, some of those key moments are when South Boulder Creek leaves its banks, when the State Highway 93 overtops and that flow. So this is really a model run that we developed essentially to look at that question. If we just capture that State Highway 93 split flow, is that enough to meet our flood mitigation goals? So I'm pretty sure. And these are all on the project webpage, so people can view these at their leisure. And they're only about a minute long. They're all in the same time step. Kind of different vantage points. Some are focused on 93, some are focused on US 36, but all in the same vicinity here. So this one actually has a detention facility on the CU South property. And we've also introduced a feature that would encourage flow into that detention facility from that split flow. So I'll just go ahead and let this one play next. Let's see here. So here it goes. And really, some of the key moments in this related to a flood mitigation design is that overtopping at US 36. So right at about here at that time step 24, what we're seeing is there's enough flow in South Boulder Creek right now that it's leaving its banks and running along US 36. So that really comes in to play when we talk about the design that we came up. So I will let it play from here. And then what you'll see is you'll see that split flow from State Highway 93 enter the bottom of the screen again. But this time, instead of going around the levee, we've introduced a feature essentially that cuts through the levee and encourages that flow to enter a detention facility that would have been located on the CU South property. I'll let it play a little bit more. And what you're seeing is that flow that enters the CU South property begins to back up. And that's really the detention feature that we evaluated, just to see if we just detain that split flow. And by detaining that split flow on the CU South property, we have no additional features on existing OSMP property. Is that enough to meet our flood mitigation goals of the project? And ultimately, at that same time step right here, right about time step 57, what you'll see is there's actually enough flow being conveyed in the South Boulder Creek channel that ultimately will run along US 36 and then overtop to the West Valley. So you see that first overtopping happening at US 36 that contributes to the West Valley flooding. And then as the flood progresses, you'll see that flow continues to contribute to that West Valley overflow flooding. So what we really found from this modeling run was that just by capturing that State Highway 93 split flow, it's not enough to mitigate the flooding in the West Valley, ultimately the goal of the project here. So I will let that just kind of finish here. And then the last thing I wanted to pull up. So that was one of the questions from the board, a very important question, I would say, because this is really the potential to reduce infrastructure on existing open space. But we did advance a concept just to be able to compare it to the variant one configuration that's been approved by city council. So this is just a drawing of that same area again. And the modeling that we had represents just this detention facility. So you'll see a big brown line here. That's the earthen embankment of a detention facility. And then we have a large concrete section. And that needs to be concrete essentially because it's in the middle of a flood plain. So you'll have flow on both sides of that, and it needs to be safe in a flood to protect against scour, seepage failures, and then also allow overtopping in a flood larger than the 100-year design event. And then we did need to put features on open space, and we tried to limit those as much as we could in this scenario. And you'll see, we proposed a levy essentially from US 36 to our detention facility. And that's really to cut off that flow from the main channel of South Boulder Creek. So rather than trying to divert that flow, we actually gained some capacity under the US 36. So we just need to block that flow in this scenario. And that's what that levy does for us. And then we also have this grade control structure, which is at grade. But it's needed just based on the soils and the flood plain in the area, just to make sure that our system's not bypassed in a flood, depending on erosion that could develop in this type of an event. So I guess the the short story of this, and I won't give you guys the five-hour version that we went through with the OSPT. But this configuration, we found to be more expensive than the very one configuration. It also had more overall environmental impacts. And it also just met it met our flood mitigation goal. So we would need all these features shown here essentially to meet our flood mitigation goals. So that's kind of the 10,000 level version. I'm happy to answer any questions and go into more detail. This stuff, I would stay up as long as it as long as anybody wants to talk about this stuff, because I really enjoy my work. So yeah, I think that's all I have. And yeah.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Brandon. Joe, did you have anything else you wanted to add before we? I guess I'm kind of chairing since I'm co-chair. Did you have anything you wanted to add before we kind of opened it up to questions and comments?
No, I just just kind of restating what Brandon just said, in terms of a comparison, the the upstream option is more expensive. It's $110 million versus the $66 million for the variant one 100. Similar flood protection and and generally higher overall environmental impact. So that's, you know, there there have been a lot of requests from the community for a side-by-side comparison. That's that's kind of the the crux of it. And the initial modeling runs that Brandon showed kind of determined that it wasn't possible to beat the to stop the downstream neighborhood flooding with only structures on CU South property. So as Brandon said, we came up with a concept that could work, but it required engineered structures on open space. So those are the discussions we're going through right now with the open space board and kind of walking through that. And in December, they'll be deliberating on it.
Great. Well, thanks so much. Yeah, it's a pretty impressive work. And I think it's nice for the community to have a visual to look at like that and to kind of get the an idea of how these kinds of recommendations are being made. So anybody have questions for Joe and Brandon? Any observations you want to share? John?
Yeah, I just like to say that to Joe and Brandon that I appreciate the work you did. And I think that it was well done and and very clear conclusions. So thank you.
Thank you for that. It was great to hear your enthusiasm for your work as well. Cool. Well, great. Yeah, I think that as a planning board, we'll be very busy next year looking at all the public feedback towards the annexation agreement. So I guess the heavy lifting is going on with the Open Space Board of Trustees this month. So our hearts go out to them. And thank you all so much for for staying up so late with us tonight. If there isn't anything else, we'll we I guess we can invite people back for the next agenda item.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks again. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So Cindy, I guess we can do some texting.
Done. Except Lupita, but I texted the other two.
I'm texting Lupita now.
Hey.
Hello.
You go. I can hear you now.
Well, Lupita has responded. So she'll up. There you are. Great.
We've lost Lisa.
Yeah, it looks like Lisa may have actually left the meeting. So we'll keep an eye out for her so we can get her back in the Zoom statuses she needs to be in.
David, can I have my gavel back?
Or did I take a gavel? Oh, yes, I'll mean. Actually, about halfway through, I remembered, oh, I'm the chair. I get to do something.
I should have said something on my way out. I was just I forgot that I had to recuse us that I kind of went out quickly.
And here's Lisa.
Okay, great. All right. So we're back as a full board. I hope you had a good time with matter 5A. We're moving on to 5B. This is the update on the scope for Phase 2 of the DCS or the Designing Construction Standards for Transportation. As usual, I will turn it over to Charles Pharaoh to introduce the matter.
You know, Steph doesn't have a presentation tonight. This is purely informational for the board. If you have any feedback, suggestions, comments, reactions, please feel free to email them directly to Edward Stafford. His contact information was included in the packet.
Great. Is there anybody who wants to say anything on the public record about this? Or do you want to take that advice and just send individual comments straight to Edward?
Well.
That sounds fine to me.
I I would just like to reiterate something that I think it was Kurt Nordback said about, I think it was Kurt. It would be wonderful if the sidewalk issue could be part of this year's discussion, and I will leave it at that.
I'm with you very well on that, Sarah. Thank you. David?
Yeah. And and on that, I'll just I wanted to give a shout out to Community Cycles for digging deep into these into these standards and and having some really good suggestions. So regardless of what the scope ends up being this year, I'm hoping that those comments will will be very useful as as this new as the new revision comes out.
Great. Okay, so last chance to make any comments on that. Okay, then we're going to move on to our last agenda item of the night. And oh, it's the 2020 Letter to City Council. So we spent a lot of time working on that, thanks to David, who used the technology of Mural to help organize our thoughts. And then after the meeting was over, he and Sarah Silver were our first editorial team, and they provided a draft letter for us that's in the packet. Let's go through the letter a little bit tonight. And and then I think, you know, we can handle this in one of two ways. One way would be to have Cindy put the letter up on the screen and wordsmith it as a group. Another way would be for us to go through changes that we might want to see in either general or specific, and then assign those changes to a new pair of editors who would implement. who would implement those changes and bring it back to our next planning board meeting. We have an opportunity to draft this letter three times, because our next planning board meeting would would be would allow us to do a third draft. Now that we wouldn't be able to take home with us the way we can the second draft, because it's right before the the meeting that it goes to the city council. But tonight, I think we have a chance to make more general comments or make some specific comments to a couple of volunteer editors and shorten our meeting if people want to do it that way. So I'm holding out those those two different options to you. What do people think?
Well, I would be a little concerned about going, having everyone do their own thing separately and then coming back. It just seems like you could end up with seven completely different.
No, no, that's not the, that was not what I said.
Okay, I misunderstood them.
We can each give our thoughts here on the public record, either specific, general, or both, and assign two editors to do what you and David just did. And take your base document as the first draft and continue to tune it up based on feedback from tonight. So if we chose that, I would suggest that we pick these two editors now so that they know to take seriously good notes.
Before we go too far with that, I'd like to know a little bit of the timing, because I have so many deadlines coming up in the next couple of weeks. That I really want to do this, but if I can just do it at the right timing, I can do a much better job than if I have it like in the pile that I have right now. I have a lot of writing to do, a lot of reading to do for all the things.
So so there are five people who haven't yet served as guest editors or volunteer editors. You're one of them. It would be great if you participated. But but the the second draft has to be ready a couple of days before the next planning board meeting. So you would have twelve days to incorporate the comments that you hear tonight. David?
I'll just say that Sarah and I realized that Thanksgiving holiday was coming up. So Sarah and I both pushed each other to be ready like to like two business days after planning board and have it. I think we had it done like the Monday after the last Thursday. So it can be done very quickly if if you want, if the two of you, whoever takes this on, want to just kind of knock it off, and that way I can get into the packet.
David, do you or Sarah or both of you want to embroider on that a little bit, to use my favorite John Gerstle expression, and talk about your process for developing the first draft for us?
Yeah, what basically, I think I pointed out that sections one and two were relatively easier than section three. So I thought maybe one of us would do one and two, and one of us would do three. So we both went off, and I authored sections one and questions one and two, and Sarah authored number three. And then we just, we shared our input, and then we actually went through a round of marking up comments before we even met. So we each authored, like, you know, we each worked, like Sarah worked on section three, I worked on section one and two. Then we each made comments on that. And then when we came together, we had lots of stuff to talk about, and we just basically hammered it out.
Just just David, just so you know, we we talked on the phone for three hours. So it does, it does take some time to to put it all together.
I have to say, I think you guys did a beautiful job, and I I have hardly any comments here. So I personally use it as is.
Maybe it won't be a three-hour project for of editors, if that's the way we choose to do it. So where are people leaning at this point to to a feedback session geared at, you know, providing some detail to another pair of volunteer editors, or to have Cindy put the document up on the screen and and wordsmith it here and now?
Let's do it here and now.
So John's saying here and now. Peter?
I'm saying, let's get it done. It's it's really in great shape, and I think we can get it done.
Can I just add one idea there? I do think it's in good shape, but I don't, I don't, you know, there were some some comments by community members that I was sympathetic with, and it may just be the the result of trying to come up with something that we all agree on. But I do think that we have really good themes. We have really good priorities, but I think we are a little short on 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 actual actionable things. And I think that does allow us, I totally agree with Macon. It does allow us to potentially set us up for not getting much done, because, yeah, we may say, oh, well, we want to solve the middle middle income thing. But if we don't say if that's going to be done through, you know, tax dollars, grants, zoning, relaxing zoning, we, you know, there's the controversy, or not the controversy, the very important discussion of whether higher density results in affordability, or just more high-end stuff, but just higher density or high-end stuff. So so all those kinds of things make us, I think, say fairly general stuff. So I agree that it's a good general letter. But I wouldn't mind having the discussion of whether there aren't some things on that list that has been proposed by the community that we could agree maybe examine.
I'll echo, you know, others who agree that this is a really good work, good piece of work. I also think there's no premium whatsoever in getting done early. You know, we have to kill after the next planning board meeting. There, there has never been a planning board in my five years that didn't push it to the very end. And we're kind of like A students here, and that we'll be, we'll get three drafts in, because we started so early.
So nothing then. Let's just adjourn and then.
I think we, yeah, we've had, we've had some late nights, and I don't think we do our best thinking after ten o'clock, though I think we do as best we can and often pretty good thinking. And I want to spread around the 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 work so that other planning board members who want to take a crack at at drafting get a chance to do that, because there were people who wanted to take a crack at drafting who didn't get it, because we assigned it to Sarah and David last time around. So if there are folks who are interested in in putting a stamp on this, you know, I'd like to just spend half an hour making suggestions to a pair of editors and send them home with it, and let them bring a second draft back for the next meeting. And if if it's great, and we don't have much to do with it, and we can, you know, wordsmith it a teeny bit and send it in, and if it still needs more tuning up, then we can spend more time on it in two weeks.
Sure. I thought Lisa and I were gonna do the next round, but maybe my memory isn't correct, because it was past ten o'clock. But
I think we both wanted to, but there may have been other people who are interested as well. I'm not, I'm not sure if that was all inclusive.
I'm happy to work on it with Lisa, and together we can capture notes right now, as long as they're intelligible and smart post-ten PM comments that y'all are making. And then and work on that, and we're happy to involve anyone else. I am pretty much volunteering, Lisa. Do it with me, but
Well, I can
Never even met you in person, Lisa. It's so
I know. It's so sad.
I'm happy to stand there and not contribute to the editing. So the only the four people left who could be second-tier editors are you and Lisa and John and Lupita. So what were you going to say, Lupita?
I was gonna say, I'm very used to finalizing documents for all the papers I have to publish with my students. I said the last word. So I don't like something, I change it because that's wrong, not because I don't like it. So I'm more factual than anything else. My interest is always, can you say this in the clearest possible way? Nobody can get it wrong. So that kind of editing, I can do it. But and I will do anything in between if necessary. But like I said, my timing is it's just, it's just tight right now. But I do want to contribute, absolutely want to contribute.
Do you want to do the third round then, Lupita?
Yeah, if it gives me a little bit more time, I'm happy to contribute. Yeah, I will be happy to do that.
So so one thing I think we could offer, because we're not going to be able to take it home for the third round, would be for for you to be the the driver on the third round in two weeks when we put it up on the screen. It could be your screen that we share, and you can do the typing.
Yeah, actually, I worked with Lupita. The two of us worked on a section last year at the Boulder Public Library. Remember, we worked together. Lupita was so good at wording, and just totally, I thought you you just had such a great way of of getting it more punchy and concise. So that feels really good to me. And if the package in advance, you could start looking at it before the meeting to so that you could come with some of your ideas for punching it up. Does that make sense?
That's doubly impressive, given that Lupita does this in two different languages and maybe more. So
Cutting, 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 cutting. In English, I do too, but in Spanish especially.
I wish I could do that, too. Most impressive. John, are you interested in in editing, or are you okay with leaving it to Peter?
I'm delighted with the way things are going now. So
Okay. Great. Great. Okay, so Peter and Lisa, provided Lisa's okay with being volunteered by Peter. Okay, good. You are the editors for the second draft. Lupita will take care of managing the editing in our third draft in person in real time. And so I'm going to start by asking for people to give Lisa and Peter their comments. David, you might want to reiterate what you just said at some point about Macon and his comments.
Yeah, I'll let, if anybody else wants to go first, you're welcome to, but I'll
I have a slight edit for you guys.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Only thing I'm going to say, because it's not my letter, in your in the subject matter line, it needs to be twenty twenty, not twenty twenty-one for the letter.
Last year's letter said twenty twenty.
It was a mistake.
Their twenty twenty retreat or something.
I I've checked this. I'm like a hundred percent certain it should say twenty twenty.
Okay, because I think we've usually gone the year ahead. When we've done our work in December, we've dated it for the next year. But if you want to
Up to you.
Wrong for the last five years, then let's fix it now.
But I'm just going off of what the email was from the clerk's office.
Okay.
City manager's office. So that's what I was going off of.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, comments. Help, let's help Peter and Lisa tune this letter a little more.
True, what I'd hit. Generally, what we heard in comments, and I might even go back and listen to some of the comments we got from the public before I start editing, we're around kind of being a little more concrete and specific and less broad. Is that something that other that resonated with other members of the planning board too? Or what did you take from those comments from the public?
Well, I
Go ahead, Dave. Go ahead, John.
I was interested to to read those comments from the public, but in fact, this is our letter, not the public's letter to council. So while I welcome those comments, I don't regard them as you know, something that we are obliged to include in our letter.
I'm going to agree with John and say that that I I agree with the the concept of the the public comment. And while I thought the comments that we received, both in public comment and in our email, were incredibly thoughtful, and you know, the stuff about making ADUs available, for example, in every single family lot, you know, that's a terrific goal. And and if we want to include that in our letter, I think we all have to agree on that here. And not just take public comment and incorporate it, just because Harmon thinks, you know, that that Macon had a good idea, or that you know, that you know, one of the other members of the public who wrote had a good idea. But I think that the the concept of being punchier and going straight to the main points, because council reads a lot, and we heard from Macon, who read eight years' worth of these sets of letters from multiple boards. It's important to listen to that from a former council person. Though he didn't mention that planning board is is like a really important board. So
So I'll, I would say that from my perspective, we already, we've actually put some very specific things in here specifically finalizing the use table review update and the East Boulder sub-community plan. And we have spoken specifically about housing as a major concern. We may not have used the term major concern, which but we, it's clear that that is a fundamental concern for us. And I don't think the year twenty twenty-one is going to be a year where when the city staff capacity is going to be so much greater that it can take up seven very specific issues in addition to what's already in the pipeline. That doesn't mean those ideas are good or bad. I'm not passing judgment on them or supporting them or not supporting them. But I think we do need to be realistic about what it is that's already in the pipeline and staff is already working on, and that we really want to finish and not have pushed off because another idea captures our attention in this meeting tonight. And that so that's my take on it. And and, you know, I think Macon should send his letter to council and, you know, and I think everybody who wants has a comment should send it in. But I feel like we have tried very hard in this letter to to keep, to try to keep the ball moving forward on stuff that's already in the works.
So let me just take a quick poll. Does anybody want to expand the scope of the letter to include specific ideas that we we saw, like parking maximums or ADUs on every lot? Or so raise a hand if you want to do that.
Dave, you want to say something?
I'll speak, and then you can follow. So not to expand necessarily as my in terms of adding new themes, but to reinforce the what you mean. For me, sometimes it's easier to, well, I'm in the business of talking specifics. So I always tell my students, I don't want platitudes. I don't want fuzzy words. I want facts. And I need those facts to be very clear in the way that expressed with that. People don't don't mistake them. So if we want to talk about affordable housing, but something is specific, just to to make it clear, that's why I mentioned when we had our exercise, which I really enjoy with the moving of the parks. The the case of the ponderosa, to me, was very clear. You talk about something that happened or is happening in the context of the major theme, so that people understand what you mean by it, and hopefully it's easy to connect the the lofty goal to the specifics. How do we reach our lofty goals? Well, by doing these specific steps. So it's goals versus objectives. So to me, that's kind of a good way to clarify what we mean by things. So not to add things that are not already there, and more of if you can reinforce that or clarify what you mean by the lofty goals, that that will be the only place that I will add something to it. But not, it should not be extraneous to what we already have. Does that make sense?
Yeah, to me, yeah. And I think, you know, ponderosa made it in as a specific, there were, you know, several specific items, I think, maybe just highlighting them. David, what were you going to say?
Well, yeah, I, you know, in lieu of, I kind of, I think it is difficult. There is the potential of pointing out things that we know require study. That, you know, that we don't know for sure that this is an actionable thing. And we probably, there are things that we may not have consensus on in the board that we just can't put in the letter, because it's just, you know, because I feel strongly about it, maybe somebody else doesn't. If we think about the planning reserve, we've talked about the planning reserve for years, pointing that out in the letter may or may not have use because it's such a big thing. And, you know, if we did point it out in the letter, we'd have to put words around it to say the planning reserve is a great opportunity, but also we don't want to just open it up to outcomes that that are just that are not well thought out, right? So that takes a lot of work. Parking minimums to maximums, that one may be really interesting. I think we we see a lot of emphasis on cars. That one, I don't really, I don't know how other people would feel about mentioning, looking at changing the way we deal with parking. I I don't know how other people would feel about mentioning, looking at changing the way we deal with parkings for minimums to maximums. And really putting our our kind of realizing our priorities that way. Go ahead, Sarah.
I just want to respond to that because I feel like based on the briefing we got two weeks ago from the folks working on parking and neighborhood parking permits, that's already in process in the city. If I'm and that discussion is already underway.
That's.
We want if we want to reiterate that we think that discussion is important, I don't think there's a problem with that. But I feel like it's 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 we don't need to say it to have it be something staff is already moving forward on.
Let me just interrupt. I I think we're good. I don't I don't get the sense that anybody on Planning Board wants necessarily to add new topics to what we have in front of us. Can I get a hands on that? Does everybody agree to that? David, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, okay. I just have a lot to say about each one of these ideas, right? And sometimes what does it even say those things, but.
They're really important. Like I said, I mean, if all about what I wanted, you know, there there would be a bunch of other topics, but we did spend four hours last week trying to.
Year last year, we had a four hour drafting session separate in addition to all of our planning board meetings. So we actually saved the meeting. So remember that part.
I I I think where I'm at, and maybe it's where other people are at, but in different places is I think the feedback, I mean, I don't want to call it criticism, but the feedback, to be more specific, is very valid feedback. But this was very carefully wordsmithed, and the work we did last week was done so that we weren't introducing specific policy goals that we couldn't all agree on. You know, so we each probably have a laundry list of things, a wish list of things that we want, some of which may be contradictory with other members. And so, you know, I I just don't know that introducing specifics is going to be productive, although I appreciate why they wanted it.
So with that in mind, Lisa, the only feedback that I have, I I don't think I I'm gonna speak again likely on this is just, I I think that A, making it more concise is important. B, I think that really making making it cue to the themes of equity and innovation, which I think Sarah and David already did, but, you know, as we, you know, as we make it concise, really focus in on how, you know, each of our little advice pieces falls into one or the other theme. Again, I think they did that the first time around, but just stay with that theme, equity and innovation. And and then finally, I was a little surprised by the number of times the missing middle came up. And I went back and I looked at the at the bubbles from the mural. And I didn't see missing middle very much. I saw a lot about affordable housing. And I think, you know, the way the program works, you know, it's we're supposed to aim for 15% affordable by 2035. And the dollars go 20% for low to mod and 5% for middle, as I remember. So, you know, I don't want workforce housing and low income housing to get lost in all the references to the missing middle. And I don't particularly believe that we referred to the missing middle that many times when we were together as a group two weeks ago. So I'd just like to see that balanced off and consolidated down to, you know, concise statements about a preference for affordable housing, including, you know, missing middle housing and and and, you know, for sale housing to middle class people.
How many times did you see the phrase actually occur, Harmon? I'm scanning through right now and I.
I'm not sure I thought at all. I saw something that said mid housing.
But we see metals there. It's a bullet under equity under question three.
Right. And we actually, Harmon, I'm not just gonna disagree with you that there's a way to to incorporate all the kinds of housing affordability issues, but we almost all of us brought it up in our in our actual discussion. And that was where that came from. But I I think capturing the spectrum of housing affordability issues is is a fine way to go about doing, you know, taking not making missing middle the central are the central point.
Great. Yeah, I could do it.
And is that an accurate reflection of what you just said, Harmon? So I just want to make sure I'm I'm understanding. So not not that you want to lose that idea of middle income or missing middle or whatever phrase we have in there, but to make sure that it's balanced with more traditionally thought of affordable housing.
Right. And I think my preference is to the extent that it balances, it's actually a secondary importance to load a mod and workforce housing because that's the way it lives in Boulder's programmatic inclusionary housing efforts, where our the majority of our focus is on collecting money for low to modern workforce housing.
And see, I see that as a problem with Boulder's current program.
I I agree with Lisa. And I I feel like what we taught, I mean, my recollection is that what we each brought up was that there's this the barbell challenge where we have a robust, if not fully realized permanently affordable housing program. And we have very high end housing and we have this sort of diminishing body of middle mid range housing and really no not that many tools to meet that need. And that, which again, which is not to say it's the most important housing need. It is it is it is, but it is it is an important housing need. And I that's what I was trying to capture. And I I don't know, David, if if you felt like that was what we were trying to capture.
I think so. I I think and I think that it can probably if there's redundancy, if it's if 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 it's, you know, appears in too many places, it should be trimmed down, right? Because it's one one component for sure. But but I do think that we were, we definitely did articulate the needs of the missing middle as something that should be in there at some point.
Lupita?
Well, I I usually agree with Sarah, but this one I disagree very strongly that we don't have a robust lower income housing.
Oh, I I think we both agree with that.
And if we did, we would have a lot of white people living in trailer parks in this city, not Latino people mostly. So until we see those differences as stark as they are right now, we have no business talking about how robust our, you know, lower income housing is because it's very racially divided. And we need to address that. So I'm sorry about that. But it it's just, we don't want to go there because it's so unfair that to talk about the middle right now as the most important one, it it just makes no sense to me. It is important, but we have not solved the other problem yet.
And and we.
I don't think we mean that.
We didn't. That's certainly not what we meant, and that's certainly not what I said.
Well, robust, very clear things to me.
By robust, I mean, we have an organization dedicated to building permanently affordable housing and that we do have some revenue streams that serve that purpose. I didn't say it was perfect. In fact, I said it's right, but that it exists. And where we're missing what was what's happening is, you know, something David said in the last meeting, we have these outcomes that end up being very high end housing that produces funding that goes into the permanently affordable housing program. But we aren't, we don't have, we don't have enough in this middle area. I'm not saying and none of us are saying it's the top priority, but it can't be forgotten either.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's that's what I thought. That that's what the statements were, that, you know, you have to kind of remember that this has to be addressed to, but not to say that at the expense of the other ones. As long as that is clear, I think we would not be any problems because we have such a long way to go all around. But certainly, there's a lot more to be done on the other end because it it is a lot more problematic to have, especially, you know, in the middle of the pandemic with the people who are sick, I'll tell you, isn't those lower income communities. It is not in the middle income communities.
And yeah, and Lupita, I think that's totally why why it's interesting to ask the question. We don't have tools that are very well defined for the middle. But it's it's important to ask the question, what would those tools be and how would those tools be funded? Because we do know that the real needs are at in the communities that are more at risk. Those are the ones we really need to be putting putting our 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 dollars that we're we're channeling from the public funding from the inclusionary housing funding into those. So what what does it look like with the, you know, what kinds of tools do we have to try to do something for the middle? And I think that's a really hard question because it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky to say, oh, we're going to create block grants for people who make 70,000 or more a year, you know, and that kind of stuff. So so it's and and then there's a lot of state this state and federal regulations that make it very impossible to put limitations on how what things can be sold for other than market rate if you don't have like, you know, permanent covenants. So it's 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 it is an open question.
Well, I think what is clear is that this is a very important problem. So we just, you know, we just made the point by going through this exercise. So I think we're in agreement. There is such a great need in this area that it is important that we redouble our effort and then we get council on board to just, you know, continue to help us on this and and the community. I think this has to go beyond the board and and city council. Our citizenship, our community needs to be on board with that and not just come and say the words. They need to come to support us when we are trying to make the hard decisions that we have to make sometimes.
So I don't know who who I, you know, agree with most of the time and who I disagree with most of the time. I'm gonna say, you know, in this case, I'm I'm in very much in alignment with Lupita. You know, and I, you know, I have my politics and they're not exactly the same as everybody else's. But I think what what is clear to me is that this is a big issue. And my perception is that the way the first draft was written mentioned middle so many times that it seemed to be preferential towards that. I don't think that's the right thing for the Planning Board to be conveying, especially given the rift that we've just seen in everybody's viewpoints and the difference between people's viewpoints right now. So, you know, provided we have, you know, sensitivity to that and and we have language that we can all accept about how both middle and low mod and and workforce housing are extremely important. From an equity perspective, especially I would posit on the the low to modern workforce housing. Then I think I'd be satisfied with what you come up with.
It sounds like it might also be useful. Let me know, other planning board members, if you think this is a step too far, but to say that we're not suggesting prioritizing middle income housing or moderately, you know, workforce housing at the expense in any way, shape or form of more traditional affordable housing, but we're recognizing that it's, as you said, something that's currently we we don't have a lot of tools to address it. And we think it also needs to be addressed. Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that's what we were trying to express.
Yeah, I think that was that's what I thank you, Sarah, for specifically reminding me it's about the tools that do not exist. Not necessarily that there's the highest priority. And thus, when you want to address a spectrum of of issues, need to be able to have a set of tools that you can, you know, that you can use for the various wavelengths you have to work with. So my my sense is that we're we're on the same page now. Sorry if I.
It's okay. I'm I'm I good, robust conversation, and we were on the same. We're on the same page.
I'm glad. And at the at the risk of reopening any cans cans of worms, I think, given what we've talked about about not having the tools for the middle housing piece, one way to handle this in my mind would be to talk more about the workforce and load a mod in the equity portion and more about the middle income housing innovation portion.
Okay. What other people think of that? Middle more under innovation?
First for me.
I think that's reasonable.
That's excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, so who else wants to talk? I'm done. This is your chance to give this direction. Sorry, sorry, David.
I want to, but I won't.
Well, if this is your chance to give Peter and Lisa some more direction so they have something to go with.
No, 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 it's good.
John?
I have just one small thing, and that is under the equity section. There's the second bullet. It says, at the request of Planning Board, Boulder has begun to recognize the CIP and so on. I that might be a little bit of back patting there that may not be fully appropriate.
How about in conjunction with Planning Board's wishes?
Or we can just give.
Boulder has begun to recognize.
We've we've been beating that horse for for five years now, but I don't have a problem just giving all the credit to the city.
You you know, you've won when you're in a meeting and the person you've been trying to convince suddenly introduces your idea as their own idea.
Right.
And and I I never bring it up. I just let it go.
Yeah, I'm happy with. I'm happy with your suggestion, John, to take the attribution out. Thank you. Good idea.
So primarily, I'm hearing more concise. And the issue we just addressed, hewing to the innovation and sorry, it's past 10 o'clock. I just didn't say there's two things to remember.
Equity.
Yes, I thought equity.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a very strong first draft, so we're in a really good position. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks a ton, Sarah and David.
You're well, you're welcome. And I will just say it was I had such a good time talking to David for such a long time. It was really, really interesting and we both were like, too bad we don't get to do this with all of us during a planning, like really sort of unpack some ideas and explore and it was really interesting.
We use Zoom. That helps to be able to look each other in the eye and say stuff. Yeah. And we were two hours apart in time zones, so I don't know what that meant.
Are you back now, Sarah, or?
I am. I am back. Drove drove through Kansas where nobody was wearing a mask.
Really?
Iowa's numbers are also completely terrifying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were all supposed to go to Wisconsin to have Thanksgiving at my sister's house and her and her husband both got COVID before Thanksgiving. So it's a good thing we all canceled.
Are they okay?
Yes, they they only had smell loss for the most part, and they're starting to regain their sense of smell. So we're hoping that it's that they're the kinds of people who don't get a very intense version. But yeah, it's a everybody's knowing somebody now. It's a it's totally different, right?
I was just giving an update to my my son, my 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 freshman kid just came home on Saturday. He's taking his last exam as this evening when he came in just to ask for dinner. And and that was one of my biggest fears on, you know, traveling in the middle of the of the Thanksgiving thing. He got three COVID tests done as soon as he arrived this week. So apparently, she used when this rapid testing. So he got those done. And then he did the Stasi one. He guessed the results today. So he's here, but it is the kind of thing that you don't have to go very far to find somebody who has had it. I've had a number of my friends here and in Boulder in the different, you know, like mostly on the trailer park communities and the public housing here. Most community, most families I know, they have had somebody or the entire family. So it is very, very common now, and even some of the businesses have been asking if there's a way to close shop. So these are the people who live all these businesses that are willing to go, you know, in hiatus so that can keep health healthy. So anyways, please stay safe. And hopefully this well, it's gonna get worse, but hopefully won't last as long as they're predicting.
So for for those of you following along at home, we're we're done with the 2020 letter to city council. We're into debrief. And and I'll let the debriefing continue if folks have more to talk to to each other about.
No, I can't remember my timing of World War II very well, but we're at that point where we know it's gonna end, but it's not gonna end for a while yet. And yeah, you have to keep on keeping on.
Does anybody have any calendar check items that they need to discuss? Does anybody have any calendar check items that they need to discuss? Sarah?
So there is a possibility I won't be able to participate in the December seventeenth um uh meeting.
Okay, well, just keep us informed and and we we hope that. Okay, anybody else? Calendar issues? Okay, Cindy, do you have any calendar issues to inform us of?
No, um we're just on schedule as normal and uh our last meeting of the year will be next. Our next meeting, December seventeenth. And um we will be virtual the first of, starting the first part of the year, and I don't know for how long. So that's as honest as I can be.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I just want to mention something uh because I did, I do have something on my schedule right before our meeting on the seventeenth. I will be here. I might just have, possibly, be a little bit late. I'm gonna be giving a talk for something related to COVID and for communities. And so I don't want to miss that. I'm supposed to close the the, it's called straight um COVID straight talk. And I agree to it, but I had to be doing the very last part of it. As soon as I'm out of that one, I'm on this one.
Okay, so Lupita, if you can just commit to um texting me or Cindy so that we know um, you know, when when you're gonna be joining, uh that would be great if you're gonna be late. Otherwise, we'll just expect you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize for not texting. I had a sudden plumbing emergency that required.
I had it myself last week. Middle of the night.
Well, back when we uh used to have dinners, we would have trouble getting ourselves to move in from the break room before six oh five. Now we're
So do we have any uh reports at all from Hella or Charles?
Nothing from staff.
And nothing from me.
Thank you very much for all of your assistance tonight and the guidance.
Well, and as always, thanks to Jean and Cindy for um making everything work and continued technology-wise.
Brenda helped us tonight, so thanks.
Brenda too, yeah.
Much appreciated. Okay, um if no one else has any uh reports from your committees or anything else, then I think we can adjourn.
They say for healthy.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, Brenda.
Oh, Cindy?
Yeah.
Um maybe um you should send the word version of the letter to Peter and uh Lisa. Because I think it's just in uh PDF right now.
It is. I'll do that right now.
Probably better than me doing it because that would be kind of serial meeting like, yeah.
I'll I'll do it right now since I'm out tomorrow.
Cool, all right.
Okay, good night. Thanks, Jean, for everything.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah. I'll, so I'll see you next week.
Okay, sounds good. Have a good day tomorrow.
Okay, bye.